Good evening. Tonight, as we have for the duration of this pandemic, we are conducting our monthly April Borough Council meeting using the Zoom webinar platform to ensure the health and safety of the public, our staff, and our Borough Council. We're glad you've joined us virtually for this meeting tonight. Participants attending tonight's meeting may provide public comment during the public participation and public hearing portion of the meeting. During these portions of the agenda, please raise your hand virtually on the Zoom platform, and our staff will unmute your microphone and announce your name. You will then be able to speak. We will have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning and one towards the end. Thank you again for joining us tonight, and we will now begin our monthly council meeting. With that, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Mr. Crack with the roll call.
Ms. Berkeley.
President.
Mr. Dalton.
Ms. Dugan.
Here.
Mr. Kirchner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
President.
Mr. Soto.
President.
Mr. Weiss. Mr. Ewol. Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Managers here, assistants here, chief or lieutenant.
Here.
And solicitors here. You have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. With that, first item on our agenda tonight is the approval of our March regular meeting minutes. Are there any corrections, additions, or comments from anybody pertaining to last month's meeting minutes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve last month's meeting minutes?
So much.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Any questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries seven zero. Next up, under our items tonight, we have, I don't believe we have any presentations on the council agenda. So we will move to open the first round of public participation. Again, as we mentioned in the opening dialogue, any members of the public wishing to make public comments tonight, please raise your hand virtually on the Zoom platform. A member of our staff will then unmute you and announce your name. You can then provide your name and address and provide comment to council. And we will have a second round of public participation later in the evening. Towards the end of the agenda.
Ms. Tackett, I've turned on your microphone. My name is Tracy Tackett. I live at 225 Church Street. I just wanted to comment on the proposed development at the corner of Church and Main Street. As we've indicated before, we think that that development is too dense, and we don't think that the trash is appropriately located, attached to the existing neighbor, and that adequate parking needs to be provided. And we just have real concerns about the process that has been followed with pushing this through the Planning Commission, and we really think it should go back to the Planning Commission and really be vetted out. Thank you. Mr. Walco, I turned on your microphone.
Thank you, council. Can you hear me? Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak. I just wanted to make sure that I'm able to be heard through the setting.
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Walco.
My name is John Walco, and I'm an attorney with the law firm of Kill Kenny Law. I'm here today to speak on behalf of my client, Friends of Church Street, in opposition of the plan. And Ms. Tackett was just referencing that's before council today for consideration. I ask for the record, to the extent possible, that we be provided with party status for purposes of any appeal of council's decision tonight, if this plan is hereafter approved. Friends of Church Street represents 19 property owners and occupants in the immediate vicinity of the proposed development on the corner of Church Street and Main Street. The property is identified as 34 South Main Street on the resolution, but I point out that the plan itself identifies addresses for the property being 207 and 209 Church Street, with other addresses for the property being at 203 and 205 Church Street. Clearly, the main access points to the apartments are on Church Street. And for purposes of representation, the members of this group are on both Main Street and Church Street, and are occupants and owners at 30, 28, 26, 24, and 22 South Main Street, 10 North Main Street, and 211, 213, 215, 217, 218, 219, 220, 222, 225, 226, and 227 Church Street. Certainly, Friends of Church Street recognizes the importance of affordable housing in the borough and welcome any changes to provide for such housing in the borough's zoning, stormwater, solid waste, subdivision and land development ordinances to provide for and promote such uses. However, as it stands now, this plan does not comply with your ordinances. And if you approve this plan, you're going to lose all future opportunities for compliance. This opposition is not about the proposed use or the proposed occupants. It's more about this plan that's being presented to council today. And this plan itself simply states that there is a waiver requested from the subdivision and land development ordinance for, quote, "all conditions not currently met." And that's a blanket statement. I submit to you as council members that if you don't know what conditions are currently not met with this plan, if you can't answer the questions as to what this document and what the review does and provides, if you don't have those answers, then it's irresponsible and contrary to the borough codes and potentially dangerous to approve a plan because of their blanket relief for a admitted lack of compliance with your codes. And I recognize that council will rely on your professional staff and your planning agencies. And here, your borough engineer did a thorough review of what was presented on the plan, but because of this blanket general waiver of the SADO request, simultaneously with the preliminary and final approval combined, there really is no itemization or review of what's being waived or the impacts of such waivers on the development. For the same reason, the Planning Commission wasn't able to consider the needs and the prudence of such waiver requests. Their reviews were directed to be limited for this project. So this plan presents a number of questions, which, if not adequately answered, can result in drastic reductions of qualities of life for the surrounding residents and the clients I represent. As Ms. Tackett mentioned, there's questions about waste disposal. How do you get the units out? How will ventilation be insured? I see that the resolution does say that it needs to be in a sanitary fashion and a regular basis, but that's open for interpretation. And enforcement is going to be an issue moving forward. In addition, this plan for 23 units by your code requires 46 trash recycling receptacles in that storage unit. And it's a small room, which, according to their plan, can only fit 21 receptacles, not even half. So how's that going to work? I certainly wouldn't want to be the neighbor on the other side of that wall of that trash room. Was there an emergency fire safety life services review of this plan? How will the fire and emergency responders access the third-floor black back units that are not on the side of Church or Main? How would the residents escape if there was a fire on the Church Street side where the only fire escapes are located? Where would the residents park that are going to be occupants of this business? I understand that there is a requirement for at least parking to be required, but there's not a requirement that be provided for free. And combined with the refusal of the borough to prevent the residents of this building to obtain parking passes on Church Street, despite also claiming that the building fronts only Main Street, it's clear that the existing residence parking, my clients' parking, will become more scarce due to this favorable arrangement with the developer. We certainly recognize the Borough Council wants to help veterans and anticipate that the developer will likely start with veterans in the apartments, but there's no guarantee it's going to remain that way. There's no guarantee that these apartments are going to remain affordable. There should have been protections put in place to ensure that the concept of veteran housing is not a Trojan horse that just lets this approval process go through without pushback and then have it changed. There's nothing in place for those protections. The developer in an earlier letter says that these are going to be affordable simply because they're small. But all you have to look is at the prices of townhouses nowadays to know that smaller doesn't mean more affordable, particularly in a desirable area such as this. Could stormwater have been improved on this site to benefit the borough and all residents? Who knows? I didn't see a stormwater plan, so who knows what could have been designed to help any issues with water runoff? And again, the biggest question is, what parts of the codes are not being followed? What provisions need waivers? So in the end, I respectfully submit that council, you don't know what you're getting with this plan. Don't know what you're giving up, and you don't know what the future holds for this development. All you have are representations from the applicant, which legally could still change in the future. Don't know the numerous lack of compliances with the code. There's probably too many to spell out that general waiver request was needed, and you don't have a reason provided to grant such waivers. And all you have are residents, my clients, surrounding this development who's going to have to deal with the practical consequences of the lack of parking, the improper solid waste collection and storage, or other land planning requirements that this board requires of all of its developments because of lack of oversight and requirements to follow the code for this plan if so approved. So we respectfully ask that Borough Council follow your codes, follow your plan requirements, to deny this plan when it's before you today. Thank you.
For the purpose of the minutes, Mr. Dalton did join us shortly after seven.
Ms. Swar, I've turned on your microphone.
Hi, thank you so much. That's kind of good that I follow you, right, Mr. Attorney? Because I am the one on the other side, and that's why. My name is Janice Swar, and I live at 211 Church Street. And first of all, I want to thank you, John. I'm looking right at you. I don't think you can see me. I want to thank you, Jonathan and Beth. You guys were fabulous. I want to thank you. I'm sure you guys have been plastered with calls and emails. God help you. I mean, I wouldn't want to sit in your position right now. And I want to thank you for your quick response to me and your wonderful insights and your concern, and I really appreciate that. And because of our dear attorney, who is part of me, my cat is unhappy when mommy gets on the computer. If he steps on the keyboard, I apologize. I'm going to go ahead, and I'm going to read what I wrote to council for those who did not have privy to that. Much has already been written regarding the proposed conversion of 34 South Main Street. This letter, and by the way, Borough Council, this is something different. I am going to go on the side of the health and safety and quality of life issues, which I know there are no, what do you want to call them, codes for or whatever. This letter addresses my strong conviction that this endeavor endangers the health and welfare of the veterans who will be living there as well as the surrounding community. Absolutely nothing was ever presented by the new owners addressing health, safety, and welfare. Only a poorly planned out scope of how the building would be cannibalized into warehousing. 24 tiny apartments for subsidized housing, not one word regarding trash indoor and outdoor air quality. On-site assistance, should there be PTSD issues, no one to minister to their needs. All of the health, safety, and quality of life issues had to be brought up by the Planning Commission, the residents and concerned citizens who were there at the first Planning Commission meeting, and the rest of us here on Church Street, of course. Inconsistencies have been presented from the first meeting all the way through the process. And then I did insert one of the Chester County Clean Air Codes, which is Code 601.16, garbage and refuse storage collection and disposal, which deals with clear. The entire undertaking was rushed through the Planning Commission and passed off onto Borough Council before issues could be properly vetted and clarified. Furthermore, any letters that were written by Church Street residents were never read aloud at any of the Planning Commission meetings. Here it comes, Peter. Normally, an outspoken cheerleader for Phoenixville. I now need the new owners and Borough Council to prove to me, and all of us for that matter, that clean air, sanitation, and quality of life and humane treatment of these proposed residences priority, not greed for the owners. Living life in small quarters with no place for recreation does not benefit them at all. Plus, if this is not 100% smoke-free campus, their health is in serious danger. It is tragic that residents who live here, the backbone of the community, who have raised their families here, have become secondary to outside big business investors. It is also tragic that no matter how the Friends of Church Street feel about this, these outside interests might win out. I have personally held back from comment, as my property is right next door. I hold the honor, as you guys know, of being World Services Chair Emeritus of a worldwide 12-step fellowship to help people quit smoking. Ironically, the smoke-free policy did not come from me, but from two other responsible building owners, landlords on the 200 block of Church Street. I am, however, also a licensed insurance professional, and smoking ranks in the top six of all fire causes. The new owners did nothing to assure the neighbors, or the community for that matter, that a smoke-free policy would be enforced. Again, we had to address it ourselves. My initial comment, when we were first at the Planning Commission, still stands. Take me out of the equation. Pretend that something might happen to me and my children would sell the house to someone with an asthmatic child.
Oh, my God.
Cannot ignore my extensive involvement in 12-step programs for drug and alcohol abuse. I fear I hear too many stories from veterans who have come home from the horrors of war and are struggling to overcome these addictions and lead clean-cut lives. To place them in these close quarters with no one on site to minister to their needs is criminal. I think I speak for all of us at the Friends of Church Street when I say it is not the dear veterans we don't want. It is the owners of the building and their lack of concern for these dear individuals. They deserve far better than what they are going to be getting. As nearly 30-year member of the Kiwanis Club of Phoenixville, just going to reach 30 years this year, it would be wonderful to feature and honor them at our very popular annual patriotic celebration in Reeves Park in May. The current proposed setting for them does not honor them. It is inconsiderate. It clearly shows the new owners have their own profit in mind rather than the health and welfare of these already underserved veterans and the community at large. The mere fact that the Friends of Church Street have to dispute this speaks for itself. However, right does triumph over wrong. I urge council to vote accordingly and build in policies that will protect the quality of life for these residents, not only of this building, but the community at large, and see to it that it is enforced, not only now, but for the future. There is a well-known phrase, "You can either eat well or sleep well." Well, obviously, these new owners will eat well, but in all sincerity, I do not see how our Borough Council can sleep well unless adjustments are made for a more equitable setting for these veterans who deserve more consideration than what is currently proposed. As a taxpayer, I cannot, in good conscience, support this endeavor. Janice Swar. That's it.
I'm sorry, hold on. Ms. Swar, I thought she was finished, and I stopped her. Let me get her back.
Oh, no, I'm done.
Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Swar. I just heard your voice as I was doing it. I apologize.
No, I just said I love you to the moon and back, but I'm willing to go to the man on this. Isn't that a military phrase? Yeah, I think it is.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
God bless.
Ms. Colicky, I turned on your microphone.
Hello, my name is Chris Colicky. I have been a Phoenixville resident for 20 years, and my husband and I own a building and a business on Church Street, about a half a block away from the proposed development. I had, yesterday, I sent all of the council members a letter with some of my concerns. The specific concerns I have echo what you've been hearing already. The density of the apartments is just too much. It is neither beneficial for the neighborhood nor for the veterans. The veterans deserve more appropriately sized apartments. A 400 square foot with a loft is just too tiny. The only one that's going to benefit from this is going to be the developer, and it's going to be at the loss of everything the neighborhood has to offer. I also have concerns with the trash and recycling. According to what the borough requires for all other rental units, each rental unit is supposed to have one trash and one recycling toter, and the plans for this building fall far short of that. And I don't know why they're allowed to not have adequate toters when everyone else has to comply with that. I am concerned with the storage of the trash and recycling. Again, if I was the neighbor on the other side of that wall, I would, I don't think I could live with it. We've shared walls with neighbors previously. We've shared walls with a smoker, and the fumes always come through, no matter how well you try to insulate. That's just going to be a miserable situation for her. I echo the concerns about parking. I really, parking is already tight, and I know everyone has heard this a million times over. To move ahead with this plan with no plan for parking, even though it might not be required, is incredibly short-sighted. Another major concern I have, according to the borough code, any building that fronts Main Street is not allowed to have a residential unit on the first floor. The only ADA apartment for this building is proposed for the first floor. Again, according to code, you can't put that apartment on the first floor, so I'm not sure how that got passed through. Other concerns, when we redid the space in our building, we had to put a certain amount of the money that we used towards the development towards being ADA accessible. I don't understand how one apartment out of 23 reaches the minimum that you need to have. We had to spend a considerable portion of our budget, it was a percentage, I believe, towards the ADA compliance, and one apartment out of 23 seems like it's going to fall far short. The other question there, so I don't believe that apartments should be allowed to be there. I believe there should be more ADA accessible apartments. The other concern is, you've put an ADA apartment on the first floor. The only entrances that are ADA accessible to that building are for the retail spaces. The other three entrances on the Church Street side each have two steps to them. You can put an ADA accessible apartment into the building, but if you can't get into the building when you're in a wheelchair, that ADA accessible apartment means nothing. And I really, I really feel strongly, I have several close family members who are handicapped, and I really feel strongly, if you're going to make it ADA accessible, it has to be from the entrance all the way through. And I did send photos to all the Borough Council members showing the stairs. There's two steps up to every entrance except for the retail locations. Now, this building, it's a beautiful building. I am in support of developing and maintaining the building. It's a fantastic building. But this really needs to be done in a way to benefit the neighborhood, benefit the veterans, and benefit the town. This current proposal is not the best option. I really think they need to come back and think about the town, the people, the veterans, and come back with a better plan instead of just thinking about what's best for the developer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kajak, I've unmuted your microphone.
Mike Kajak, 230 Bridge Street. This is not a nonprofit putting in veteran housing. This is a for-profit entity that is doing anything they can to take advantage of the system and codes to generate a staggering $303,600 in annual revenue stream without the responsibility or care the veterans deserve just in residential rental income annually. Furthermore, where is the burden going to fall versus the property owners, though more than likely sell this cash crop for four to six times their investment in less than five years, like they have done with other businesses and properties from Pennsylvania to Brooklyn, New York? Whitehall Inn is the true definition of a veteran living facility. Residents of the Whitehall Apartments have access to comprehensive support from services provided by the Coatsville Veteran Association Medical Center and a full-time resident service coordinator. There's also an onsite property manager and a live-in superintendent through Columbus Property Management Group, which is a member of the Mission First Housing Group, which manages the property. Onsite amenities include a community room, a fitness center, a computer room, laundry facilities. This project at 34 South Main, also 207 Church Street, 209 Church Street, has none of the sorts. If you're going to call this a veteran living facility while it has none of these details or the security of the Whitehall Inn, then why is it called a veteran-assisted living facility or commonly referred to as veteran living facility, also defined by Sean Lyons? Why not just call it what it is, and it's a for-profit Section 8 housing project, and this should not be depicted as a veteran living facility with intentions of winning any brownie points? I'll end on this note. If an individual needs to have their rent subsidized by taxpayer dollars, is it really affordable housing? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gravitt, I've turned on your microphone, sir.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Well, I've been before the council before on some developments. By the way, you might remember, if you haven't been by it, anyone on the call, drive by Steel Town Village and Fairview Village in the county in Phoenixville and see what affordable housing looks like. The last person just talked about, if you need to provide assistance, like Section 8 or something like that, that it's not affordable housing. My gosh, this is one of the fastest-growing, fastest-developing communities of luxury housing in Pennsylvania. The amount of luxury housing that has been approved by the Planning Commission in the last year is unbelievable but wonderful. Less approved a little bit of affordable housing. They did seven to zero, carefully looking at everything. I want to look a little bit at some of the statements that were made. I've worked in housing for 30-plus years and worked with many developers in low-income housing tax credit projects. This project is paid for by private money. The developers, their background was sailed by some previous speakers tonight. Their backgrounds are that they are veterans and into veterans housing. What happened originally was about three months ago, four months ago, I put out a proposal for, a request for proposals for any developer who was interested in project-based vouchers, which I'll explain in a second. They responded and said they might like a few in their development. I talked to them, and I said, you know what? There's a lot of really fantastic housing being built in Phoenixville. I would love to see a development that was strictly affordable. And they said, okay, what do you mean? And I said, well, you wanted some vouchers, and I noticed in your background statement that you were veterans. Would you like to consider vouchering the entire development for veterans, that many of whom had been in combat, believe it or not, in previous wars, all the way back to Vietnam? And they said, absolutely. They said, what kind of rent structure can we have? I gave them the rent structure. They said, that's a little lower than we wanted. I said, do you want to help them or not? They said, yes, we do. So I awarded a contract to them. And by the way, there have been some folks saying, oh, they're going to take it in two years, three years, five years, they're going to sell it. Guess what? Their contract is 20 years. They have to live by that 20-year contract. There's going to be support provided for 20 years from us and the federal government, but they can't back out of that contract. They're willing to sign that contract for 20 years. There was, as I mentioned before, the question of, we want affordable housing, but does it have to be subsidized? Well, I would walk around a couple of the apartment complexes around Bridge Street and Church Street, and I'll tell you something, there's no way, even with subsidy, those would be affordable. This is beautiful. We have 20, I think somebody said 23 units. I thought it was 24 units of veterans housing that we're going to support for a 20-year period of time the federal government's going to support. It is going to be smoke-free. I don't know where that came from. It will be smoke-free. Parking, well, guess what? Most of these guys, by the way, the folks that are going to be living here have been living at the VA because they're disabled veterans. And a lot of the disabilities do relate to the stress they've had in combat and that kind of thing. This is a wonderful opportunity. They, most of them have no cars. Almost none of them have any cars. But they're going to be in a location where they can walk to almost anything and any service that they need to live. that they need to live, have a decent life uh, in Chester County. So I just thought this was a fantastic project. Um, the parking situation, let's say you do have a car. Well, guess what? I think the potential uh, developers realize this. They've actually found a location in two lots where they're going to purchase or rent or lease or whatever the, the parking spaces for the folks that are in, uh, that will be in this housing. So I just think it's like wonderful that they're doing that also. Um, and just with all of this, I just, you know, I, I was on a call last night in uh, uh, Pikeville, E- East Pikeville Township. And there was, uh, there was a dispute and, and pushback against affordable housing there. Affordable, uh, one of the contractors that lives in Phoenixville and has housing in Phoenixville, uh, Church Housing, Catherine Evans, is being pushed back by the Planning Commission there. And she secured uh, a fourteen million dollar low-income housing tax credit uh, allocation to build a beautiful apartment, affordable housing apartment complex in East Pikeville. And getting pushback from the Planning Commission there after they once approved it. I mean, that kind of thing, you know, we got to stop that kind of thing. We have other people in this country, a lot of people in this country that do need assistance and that can't afford two thousand dollar a month, one-bedroom rent. And these veterans do that. I think this is a wonderful thing. We have two, two veterans that own the development company that want to help other veterans are going to make a lot less money because they've agreed to sign a long-term contract to provide assistance to veterans who've served this country. This is, and I'll shut up after this, but this kind of stuff kind of disturbs me. This is a no-brainer for any community, that you're going to help people that served this country. You're, they're going to be beautiful apartments when they are finished. Uh, they're going to be apartments that almost anyone would want. And I just think it's wonderful that the, the, uh, Phoenixville would approve this. And they have, the Planning Commission has gone over all of the details and approved this seven to nothing. So I urge your uh, support of this. And I believe it's going to be a wonderful, wonderful uh, wonderful thing for downtown Phoenixville. And by the way, when that building was occupied before, the things that went on in that building, people did park cars outside of that building. So it's not like uh, something that hasn't happened before, but we do have those parking lots that they have that they have secured. So uh, with that, uh, I will uh, say thank you very much. I enjoyed, and enjoyed talking with you and totally, totally support this and appreciate what the city of Phoenixville or the borough of Phoenixville has done uh, in terms of housing expansion, helping uh, folks that need assistance. And uh, I, I think it's just wonderful. And uh, tho- those are my words for tonight as the Director of the Housing Authority of Chester County. Thank you.
And uh, Dale, I appreciate you being here tonight. If, if your time and schedule allows, would you be able to stick around until this item comes up on the agenda in case we have any specific questions for uh, your, for your programming?
Sure, and it, 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 and I'll have to let my dog outside and, and cook dinner, but I'll keep the, keep the computer on.
Quite all right. We'll, we'll move you back to the waiting room and uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Grabat, thank you again. I'm going to disable your microphone.
Thank you.
Ms. Detrow, I've turned on your microphone.
Okay. Hi, my name is Erin, um, and I just bought my house, my first house at three, three, eight Grover Street, and it was actually my first uh, town hall meeting. Um, I'm, I'm so excited to be a part of this community, which is a community that I want to be proud of. Uh, allowing a company to charge up to twelve hundred dollars for a square foot apartment is just wrong. Um, you have grandparents or parents and would you be okay with your family members being in this situation? Would you be okay paying twelve hundred dollars for a square, a four hundred square foot apartment? Um, no, I, like, my mortgage is that much and I, my house is more than twice that size. That's ridiculous. On top of that veteran. And, and charging this much for this little of space is, is taking advantage of people. And I, you know, that's not, I don't know if that's the kind of community that we want to be. So do we want to be known for that? And I, I think that we can do better. Um, if we want to help our veterans, we need to do it right. And we, we don't need to do it half-assed. You know, it's okay if somebody wants to live in that spot and in that area, but it's, it's not okay to charge twelve hundred dollars for a veteran to live in a four hundred square foot living space. It's insane. It's immoral and it's, it's unethical. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy, I've turned on your microphone.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me? Hi, good evening. Uh, Virginia Murphy, I live at two twenty-two Church Street. I'm a six year, sixteen-year resident now in Phoenixville. And my concerns um, are around the quality of life, really for um, all of us who are downtown. I've shared my concerns with both Beth Berkeley and Johnny Wald as my middle one representatives. Um, and they really do focus on uh, the density um, and whether or not the, you know, the services and infrastructure that we have here. And we talked, you know, several people have talked about trash collection. We already are a little challenged on trash day. Everybody putting their toters out to per household and gets a little crazy and it's hard to imagine what it's going to look like with twenty-three apartments times two toters or, you know, and, and I'm not sure what the details of that look like, but it, it feels like that's not managed to the best um, advantage. And parking is an ongoing concern. It's interesting, in my sixteen years that I've lived in the borough, um, it went from being able to park near my house, which I understand it was a different era, to when the parking lots were free, to the, when they weren't free, to when they were paid, to the permit. Um, and now it's, um, I will say that the parking enforcement has helped a lot, but even with that, it is challenging to come home and find a space um, on a Thursday, Friday or Saturday night already. And it is a little hard to imagine what that's going to look like, um, even if all the folks who do move into that building don't have cars. And I know that um, the current developers have said that they've made arrangements um, for, you know, other facilities for the um, the residents who may be there, but I've seen a lot of arrangements come and go in sixteen years. And so I know those arrangements can change and that does concern me both for the persons who would move into that building as well as for those of us on the block who are already a bit challenged to find a space. Um, we take a lot of pride, um, in this block in particular, where we, we get together and um, mulch the trees and have social events and we're pretty cohesive. And I've always enjoyed that about um, our neighborhood and of course, you know, living um, in a town where I can walk myself to a lot of things, but I, I am concerned about the balance of, of the quality of life um, as, you know, we grow. And I would ask Borough Council members in looking at this to try to um, balance, think about the balance of quality of life in that growth, um, because that's very much on the minds of us who live in the downtown and sort of weather the occasional inconveniences that come with the prosperity, um, because we know that's part of the equation too. So I appreciate being able to make a, a comment and thank everybody for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Mr. Grabat, I've re-engaged your microphone as you've raised your hand again, sir.
I guess that was merit.
I just wanted to make-
You can hear me now, right?
Yeah.
Just on the, the three comments that were just made, the twelve hundred dollars of subsidized uh, rent. The Department of Housing and Urban Development has established a fair market rent uh, for uh, all of the zip codes in Chester County. And I'm, I'm happy to say that I've noticed over the last two years since it went into effect that Phoenixville keeps going up, showing prosperity and that kind of thing. And the person was expressing, oh my God, I can't believe they're going to charge this. What's going to hap- That's not the way it works. The person moving in there, first of all, is going to be, the veterans are going to be less than fifty percent of median income. They will have income. It will be less than fifty percent of median income. They will pay at a maximum of thirty percent of their adjusted gross income in rent. Uh, and the rest of it will be paid by the federal government. So they're being supported uh, as voucher holders and as veterans that serve this country. Uh, there was the, the question about quality of life and uh, the apartments, uh, the, 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 the parking and everything. Again, uh, they have found parking, but the reality of this, and I've worked in this a long time. Those guys, those women that are living in a hospital in, in Coatesville don't have cars to start with. They need to live in a place where they can walk to the drugstore and get their prescriptions. They need to live in a place where they can walk and get, buy some food. Uh, they can walk and get things done. This is a perfect place for them. And I'll repeat again, the guys that are developing this place, and we wouldn't have any protest tonight if this was the case. They could have gone in there and built two thousand dollar a month apartments easily. And nobody would be on this protesting this tonight. But guess what? They're trying to help their fellow veterans. And I think that is a, a wonderful thing. Um, and the talk was made like, oh, the, the, the crowding and, and, and all of this with these twenty-four new units and all of- Well, guess what? I, are you protesting if you walk across Bridge Street? And see the apartment complexes on the other side of Bridge Street at two thousand dollars a month for a one-bedroom apartment? I didn't hear any ta- talk about that or protest over that. This is uh, twenty-four apartments for people who volunteered, not drafted, volunteered and fought for this country or did whatever was necessary for this country and experienced a lot of, of difficulties. Some that were actually injured in combat, others that are injured in their mind because of all the stress they faced. And we're trying to help them, you know, and I think it's wonderful, I hopeful that the city of Phoenixville will try to help them. And this is not a developer coming in and uh, buying this stuff, leasing it out, and in three years, sell it out. They can't do that. They're going to have a twenty-year contract that's enforceable. So it, you know, all of that is, is part of this. And I, I just want to get the real facts out there and not the protest against affordable housing. I've dealt with this for thirty years. I know what's behind the protest for affordable housing. And I, I want to make sure we look at the facts here more than anything else. That's it.
Mr. President, I would like to raise a point of order, if I may. I know this is public participation, but are we going to allow rebuttal during public participation? I want to hear from the public. I don't want to have a back and forth between, I don't know who Mr. Grabat is, but it sounds like he's a representative of the applicant. And I want to take public statement. And I don't think it's appropriate to have rebuttal during public participation. So I would ask that we take comment from the public and we leave it at that. Thank you.
Yes, Richard, uh, just to clarify, Mr. Grab is uh, the head of the Chester County Housing Authority. Uh, he's not with the applicant. But uh, yes, we, I, I did not, I not intended to have a, a cross-talk during public participation, so we'll uh, attempt to limit that as much as we can, but uh, any members of the public that are wishing to make fresh comments, please uh, raise your hand for staff to be able to, uh, you.
Mr. K Jack.
Not anything to be a rebuttal statement, but just to what Dale just stated about the twenty-year contract. This will generate over six million dollars in revenue in rental income? Why is this not being treated as a nonprofit? This is strictly being treated as a for-profit project. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson, I unmuted your microphone.
Um, hi, uh, my name is Amy Wilson. I'm a Phoenixville Borough resident. I've lived here since two thousand and eight. Um, I live a couple blocks actually from where the proposed uh, you know, development is. Uh, my biggest questions regard the ADA compliance. And I want to have an understanding of why this building, if it's proposed for veterans, and I am well versed in in ADA regulations, and I understand that a number of veterans also may not have disabilities that require physical impairment. However, um, I want to understand why this building isn't being made ADA compliant. Um, even if the initial residents may not require those needs, is there not a thinking to the sustainability of the building? In other words, if they're going to live there for an extended period of time, would they not eventually need those kind of accessibility issues as such as, you know, I'm understanding that there's not an elevator that's proposed for this. Um, I, I'd like to have some clarification regarding that. Um, and ADA compliance, if it's, if it's truly proposed to be a veterans' housing building, or is this truly more of a money grab to say, we're just want to put some people in there? And then we, if we don't truly have protections that are going to hold up to that? Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Ewald, I have no new residents with hands raised for comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for all the of participation tonight. Uh, with that, just as a reminder, we do have another round of participation uh, towards the end of the uh, agenda tonight. With that, we will formally move on to communications and council participation. This is a time for any uh, correspondence or updates from members of council. And I will actually lead it off with Mr. Kirchner. I believe you had something for us tonight.
Yes, I, thank you, Mr. President. I just um, wanted to acknowledge the passing of my former council colleague, Karen E. Johns. She passed away on March nineteenth. And um, I'd like to share a few words of, of tribute to her. I, I got to know Karen very, very well and uh, and shared a lot of times and stories with her. Uh, first off, I want to pass along condolences to her husband, Jim, and her children, Courtney and Stephanie and, and James Junior, and, and let them know that they are in our thoughts and prayers. I first met Karen in the early nineteen eighties, I guess it was. She was a member of the first iteration of the Borough Planning Commission. And she would come to council meetings and she'd been active in um, other civic affairs at the time. So I, I got to know her fairly well. That, that activism eventually manifested in her serving two terms on Borough Council. She served from nineteen ninety-four to two thousand and one. And uh, I, two words I always think of with, of Karen were, she was passionate and compassionate. Um, and she once, she once said to me, no one loved this borough more than she did. And, and uh, I, I would not argue with that. So um, she was also an outspoken woman at a time when um, not everyone in the borough, particularly some male members of uh, council and uh, politically active folks in the community didn't quite know what to make of that. So um, and they would attack her quite aggressively and, and it was something that Karen always handled with with grace and aplomb. She, she could, she could take the heat and stay in the kitchen too. And, and I always admired her for that. Um, there are a few things in town that there are a few things in town that have Karen's fingerprints- there are a few things in town that have Karen's fingerprints on them. One of them is the foundry building. I remember years ago before all of that happened down there, that the Phoenixville Area Economic Development Corporation wanted to buy the building. But in order to make that happen, the the past liens for water and sewer had to be had to be forgiven. And Karen was, she really led a bipartisan effort to get that through. And if you can believe it or not, that was not such an easy cell back when that happened twenty plus years ago. A lot of people have taken credit for what happened with the foundry over the years. But but I know that without Karen's leadership at that very critical time, that the foundry as we know it may not have happened. While I was at Karen's viewing, I got to say hello to my my neighbor and friend here on the north side, Neil Saunders. And I thought it's because of Karen that we have Sir John Saunders Park on Railroad Street named after Neil's son, who died died tragically in an accident at what was then called the tech school. But Karen, again, stepped forward. She got that park renamed. She took some criticism for it, if you can believe it or not, but it's nice to have that tribute for a son of the north side there. The July Fourth fireworks. There were many years ago, there we had a fireworks debacle, as I would call it. I guess it was two thousand and seven or I think it was two thousand and six or two thousand and seven. It rained all day, July fourth. It was overcast, rainy, misty at night. They went ahead with the fireworks anyway, and about four of us got to see them that night. And it was after that that we turned to Karen Johns to sort of right that ship with the fireworks. And and she did it. Another thing she has her fingerprints on, and this is the last one. It's a small thing. It's the gazebo in Reeves Park that's across from her house on Second Avenue. Karen raised the money for that, raised the funding for that and really guided the the construction of that nice little amenity in Reeves Park. So I could go on, but we do have other things to do. But I just, I just wanted to say, give tribute to Karen. At some point, I hope we can find a fitting memorial for her. She did a lot for this town, really, and we are all the better for it. And I know I, for one, will miss her dearly. And I many, I know many in this town will too. So thank you, Mr. President, for indulging me.
Thank you, Rich. Absolutely. She was a tremendous force. I did get to interact with her, and I'm pretty sure all of us have stories of some sort of things that, you know, we worked together on and did to improve the community. So thank you for that tribute. With that, any other updates or communication from council? Seeing none, I will hand it over to our mayor Ursler.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council. And to all of you out there, thank you so much for attending tonight's meeting in this very unique fashion and being here with us on the one year anniversary of when we went virtual. And so thank you all so much for being here with us. I know this is a great opportunity for many people to continue to engage and join us in meetings a lot easier than coming maybe in person. So a couple of things I just wanted to update everyone on. I wanted to thank our district attorney, Deb Ryan. She and a team of individuals came and worked very, very closely. Not only I want to thank Deb, but also I want to thank the members of the Phoenixville community and the Phoenixville area, the Phoenixville Police Department, who participated in an incredible forum, which is the beginning of an ongoing dialogue around diversity within law enforcement. So thank you so much to our DA Ryan and to our police officers and community members who are participating in that. And also congratulations to our police department for all of their hard work and receiving the full accreditation. And we did receive the certificates and the plaque from the PA Chiefs Association. So thank you to all of you. It does take hours and hours of work to ensure that all of our police subscribe to the highest levels of professionalism and documentation around all of their training and all of their standards. So thank you very much to our administration and all of our officers for doing that. I wanted to give a shout out to Anne's Heart and the Manner of Hope for serving an incredible Easter dinner. And it was really spearheaded to by Chef Andrew Deary. If those may, if you may know him from, he owned Majolica, which was here in Phoenixville for fifteen years. He's considered one of the best chefs in Chester County, and he is actually working very closely now with Manner of Hope, which helps individuals to overcome addiction in any form. And so Andrew and the team from Manner of Hope came and they were volunteering and helping to serve Easter dinner to those in our community who may be in need. Also, I wanted to thank our VFW right there on Star Street for presenting the Voices of Democracy Award. The award winner this year, it is an essay competition, and they have been doing this for a number of years. But actually, what's really exciting is this year, the person that they chose not only won for Phoenixville and, you know, our surrounding area for the VFW, but went on to actually win Pennsylvania's Award for the Voices of Democracy. And this is actually a national award. And so she will be competing with her essay around the Voices of Democracy at a national level and representing our area. So congratulations to the VFW and to the award winner. We also had upcoming, of course, on four twenty two is Earth Day. And so I just want to take a moment to recognize all the incredible work that our Borough Council and our Borough staff have done around environmental responsibility. Of course, we have the largest concentration of charging stations outside of any metropolitan area in our parking lots. And also over the coming year, you'll start to see and hear more about the SOMAX project, which will be the first installation of its kind in North America and really leading the charge in in continuing to create a closed loop and the most environmentally sustainable community that we possibly can. So, long story short, it takes biosolids in our wastewater and it will turn them into renewable coal and which can be used for a variety of sources, everything from generating power to additives in building and construction materials. So it's very exciting for us. On the Dogwood Festival, unfortunately, of course, the Dogwood Festival this year will look very different than what we're accustomed to. But there are still some great activities that are going on. Some of them are going on virtually. Others are at restaurants and special social distance programs. I think one of the most exciting things that we're going to see this year as part of the Dogwood Festival is actually a shoebox parade. Very intriguing. Type it into the internet. See if you can find some YouTube videos. They are essentially asking people to create shoeboxes, decorate them, and then they will be in a parade. And I actually believe that I'll get to help announce that parade, but it will be something very exciting to look into. Go to the phoenixvilles.org website, phoenixvilles.org. You can enter your shoebox there and you will eventually see it on television in its own parade going down a makeshift, a made up main street. I don't know, a cardboard main street that will host all of these. So also very exciting. I can't wait to see all of you, you know, down, maybe not all at once. But I can't wait to see you over the coming weekends at our street closure. Of course, this coming Friday, the sixteenth. So a couple of things to note, just make sure that everyone is prepared. Certainly, I know the borough has put out a lot of great information on our social media around the timing of the street closure. This is from Friday until really Monday morning. So just be aware of traffic changes and patterns. Make sure you're following the signs. We're really grateful. I will tell you, the DVR PC did a study about our downtown area and how we fared during COVID nineteen. When COVID nineteen struck, and this is using cellphone data, the traffic in downtown decreased by eighty seven percent. So you can imagine that's a sudden, I mean, that's huge for all of our small businesses, our restaurants, to suddenly see an eighty seven percent decrease in traffic. With the closure of Bridge Street and all of the incredible precautions that people took to get downtown and safely be down there and really expand into the street, we saw an eighty five percent increase. And so that is really incredible that we saw such a small loss, really a net loss. But at the same time, I'm excited for this. Thank you to the incredible team, our Borough staff, our Borough Council for approving this. And really, this is a creative way to, not really a festival environment yet, but it is a way for us to expand the indoor footprints of all of our shops and restaurants in the historic downtown area and really help them to keep moving forward. A couple of things I hope when you are visiting, just a couple of pieces of guidance. Make sure that you're feeling well, that you don't have any symptoms of any kind of illness that you believe you could transfer or that could be passed on to others. Also, we're going to ask that regardless of your vaccination status, make sure that when it is crowded downstairs, you are still wearing a mask downstairs, downtown. Make sure that you are still wearing a mask. Make sure that you're social distancing to the best of your ability. If you do stop to eat or drink on the street, just try to social distance yourself, try to stay stationary, move over to the corner, kind of keep yourself and your party and your household safe. And then I would just ask everyone, please be kind and courteous and respectful. This is all for for you. This is for others in our community, and this is for the Phoenixville community. By taking these precautions, I know it has drug on, it is tiring and it's exhausting. But when we take these precautions, it helps to ensure our community stays open. It keeps you safe. It keeps your household safe and it keeps others in our community safe. And so also just be respectful and kind of all of our servers and the people who work in these different businesses. They have been through a lot, just as we all have. But, you know, they may have different protocols or guidelines they're going to ask you to follow, but please just do that and comply to the best of your ability. So thank you so much. Another exciting thing in the same vein is that we are starting to see light at the end of the tunnel. And on, over the weekend, many of you may have seen, but vaccines have opened for everyone in Chester County through the Chester County Health Department. This is free of charge. All you need to do is visit chesco.org backslash COVID vaccine, and you'll be able to register. If you do have any questions, you can check out a Facebook post I had. We do have some volunteers who in our community that you can text and they will do their best to help you with just the registration process. But if you are not able to register yourself online, or you know someone in our community who may not be able to register themselves for any reason, they can call the Chester County Health Department hotline at six one zero three four four six two two five. Six one zero three four four six two two five, and they can choose option four, and they will help them to get registered. A quick note too, I just, I hope all of you can continue to be so proud of our community as as proud as I am. And and I know that everyone in our community has been working hard to a common goal of getting us back as quickly as possible to our, to the lives that we know and that we love. But I want to make a very special kind of acknowledgement to a group of people, about twenty people in the Phoenixville community, who over a three week period dedicated over probably close to fifteen hundred volunteer hours, making over five thousand appointments. And that was a team of volunteers within the Phoenixville community, members of the staff at Tower Health, and also members of our staff at the Phoenixville Area Senior Center. And these were all volunteers and staff members who helped to make appointments for people over sixty five years old within not only Phoenixville, but within Chester County and helped get five thousand individuals vaccinated. So kudos, you know who you are, big hug and kudos to all of you for really taking these steps to help all these members within our community. And also thank you to our Chester County Commissioners and the Chester County staff for helping to make vaccines available to everybody as quickly as possible. I want to give one last little, two last little points. Many of you may have seen news this morning about the J and J vaccine. Yes, it has been discontinued. It is being paused, not discontinued. It is currently being paused while information is being researched. It is a vaccine that was in use here in Chester County. The incidents that did occur were within six people, but that was in a group of approximately six point eight million people in our country who were vaccinated. So this is a very rare, but still concerning cause for concern, of course. And so the FDA and the CDC want to make sure to fully investigate and understand exactly what happened. So those J and J vaccines are currently being paused here within Chester County. If you did make an appointment for a J and J vaccine, it will be switched to the Moderna, which is a two shot vaccine. So they are continuing with Moderna and Pfizer vaccines. Again, vaccines are open to everyone. And, you know, just as Rich said, this has been a difficult year for many of us, especially experiencing losses in a variety of ways. I did want to acknowledge a passing of a dear, dear friend of mine. Her name was Jane Vesco, and she lived at the French Creek Manor. She was actually my New Year's Eve date in twenty nineteen, going into the year twenty twenty. And she was almost ninety four years old when she passed away, but she had quite a zest for life. And I just wanted to take a moment to, I know Jane is smiling down upon all of us. And for many of you, you may have known Jane throughout her years. She was a longtime Phoenixville resident, but so Jane, we love you. We're thinking about you. Karen also incredible individuals. And all I can say is where we find voids within our community, where we find voids, where those who we love are missing, all we can do is fill it with love. And that is what we do best here in this community. So thank you all for all that you do. Thanks for being part of this community. And we will continue to march forward and we'll be back together very soon.
Thank you, Peter. With that, we'll move into section eight of our agenda tonight. It's appointments and public resolutions. Every month, we announce the openings that we have on various boards and committees. Tonight, we do have several items that we expect to take action on that will likely leave openings on our zoning hearing board, our recreation board, our, let's see, and our purification advisory board. And then there are several other boards and committees that will be opening or up for reappointment later in the year. If you have interest or are willing to serve on any of these boards or committees, we do ask you that you reach out to your councilperson and send in your your information for consideration. We have a need for just under a hundred different volunteers on all of our various boards and committees, and we can't do it without the support from everyone. With that, we do have several interviews for tonight. We have three that we'll start with for Planning Commission, and then we have one for an opening on Pre Advisory Commission. Coming out of the Police Personnel Public Safety Committee, where we've been doing preliminary interviews this year, there was not a recommendation for the opening that is on Planning Commission. So we will go through and provide the ability for the three applicants to introduce themselves to council. After those three have done their, have had their chance to speak, we will, and council ask questions. We can then take a motion to appoint. With that, I believe staff is ready to queue up whoever is hopefully available.
Mr. Ewald, I have Raffiello available. I'm going to allow him to talk.
Yes, hi, this is Rafaello Giampoli. Hopefully you can hear me. Quite sure, yeah, I think so. Thank you for considering me for the appointment to the Planning Commission. I'm not quite sure what I should cover. I guess I've been resident for six years. More recently, I'm also a grand top two. I'm not, I'm not a attorney or a, you know, somebody who professionally deals with regulation and code. I'm a software engineer, although also that boy other fields of engineering. The main thing I believe I can bring to the Planning Commission is the focus on trying to preserve the character of town. You know, in the midst of the substantial development, especially higher density time that we've been experiencing the last years. I, my, as I said, my main focus is to try and make sure and sometimes nudge the applicants so that the the new development doesn't drastically change, drastically affect the character of our town. Yeah, usually try to make recommendations for both practical issues such as, you know, access, traffic, maybe density issues that, you know, maybe they're squeezing a few too many apartments or that kind of issues that we've been hearing in several occasions from public participation as well. And I try to make recommendations so that the, maybe these issues are addressed before they even get to inform our council or for more cosmetic, but in my opinion, still important issues such as trying to, trying to preserve the streets, streetwise appearance of the applicants projects. Yeah, I think that's. Yeah, I think that that's about it. Again, thank you for considering my, my, thank you for considering my application for reappointment.
Thank you, Raf. Any questions from council for this applicant? Mr. Moore.
Beg your pardon. Hi, Raf. Can you tell me, A, how long you have been on the planning commission, how many, how many terms you've served? And what contribution do you feel like you've been able to make in terms of helping the planning commission deal with keeping the borough, you know, preserving the the borough's unique character, which you say is one of your key goals?
Okay, well, so I've been on the commission for one term. So this is my first reappointment, so for years. I guess I can, just from recent history, can find the, I can mention the, a continuum, I think, effort with trying to preserve the, the view, the, the, what do you call it? The character, I guess, of the schoolhouse that is on, where is it? I never remember if it's main or gay, I think main. Because that is currently being considered for some development that has caused some of us on the, well, I think all, actually. Anyway, me certainly for one, has caused concern among us for the impact on the, on the visuals of the, of that building, the existing schoolhouse. And that is something that I've been, I think, I hope I'm not taking undue credit, but I believe I've been one of the foremost proposal proponents for a reduction, reduction on the proposed development. So that it doesn't essentially obscure, conceal from view the schoolhouse, which is, if I remember correctly, is one of our few individually listed historical buildings in the borough.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from members of council? I know Beth and Brian Weiss and I have had the opportunity to interview Raf and the committee. So any other questions from any other members?
I had a couple of questions, but Rafael, you answered them. And I just wanted to thank you for, you know, your continued contribution through the planning commission right now.
Okay, thank you, Raf. If there's no other questions, we'll move on to the, we'll see who else is in the waiting room and then we can act. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just looking now, Mr. Ewald, hold on. The only other individual in the audience right now is Paul Cosco for the tree advisory.
Okay, no, let Paul in.
Hello.
Hi, Paul.
How you doing?
Doing well. If you want to just take a moment to introduce yourself, I know this is not your first time around. Paul was recommended out of personnel, police personnel and public safety for this appointment. So just wanted to give you an opportunity to introduce yourself to the rest of council.
Sure, thank you. Well, thanks for taking time to interview me tonight. I appreciate it. I appreciate the work you're doing. So, yes, Johnson said this is my, not my first time around. I've been involved with the tree commission since 2004. Some of you may not know this, but in 1995 or so, the tree commission was disbanded by the Borough Borough Council and wasn't reinstated until 2000 when the president, Mr. Michie, signed an ordinance to reinstate it, but they couldn't find anybody to serve on it. So it was until 2004 that we actually were able to reseat the council. And I was the chairman, it was the three person commission at that time. So I've been involved since 2004. I served until, I served eight years as his chair. During that time, we expanded the council from three to five. We had our first tree censuses completed in those years, 2006. And then 2008, we were able to get tree census done. We got back into Tree City USA. It was, it was a difficult time, actually, having not had a tree commission for nine years. You can imagine there were a lot of issues out there. And there was a lot of demand for tree service, not a lot of funds available. And I think at that time, there was a changeover in borough managers. So actually, I'm in here longer than Gene has been around with, with the, dealing with the tree commission and stuff. So we learned a lot. And so one of the things I think I can bring back to the council here is historical time timeline and memory. I probably visited most of the 2,400 trees out there personally. And been involved with all the planting since 2005. I think we got our first DCNR grant in 2005, 2006 for 150 trees. And so we, we've been going from there. So even though I've not been on a tree commission, I, I attend the meetings regularly, stay in touch with the commissioners, help where I can. I am the tree ten, lead tree tender for 19460 with the Horticultural Society. I've attended a number of workshops with arborist workshops over the years on my own time and my own expense. And now with the webinar platforms, there's stuff comes up with Penn State and Extension Program that that helps. So one of the reasons I, I wanted to jump in here is when I heard about the vacancy, I was concerned with the fact that we are at a new place in time with tree commission and with the borough. Environmentally, the borough is, is, is becoming more aware of our, our surroundings. Has done a number of things dealing with power, energy savings, our street lights, our borough buildings with solar, more open space type of issues. And I think we're starting to recognize the fact that trees are our infrastructure. It's a different kind of infrastructure because they're living things. But when you hear about climate change, what's the number one weapon? Trees. You know, so the fact that you might be discussing later the opportunity to be hiring an arborist, that caught my attention. It's something that we've been, that I've been pushing for for a long time. Basically, you've had us amateurs out there evaluating trees and stuff. And so now we have a chance for some solid professional help. And I was concerned that a vacancy on a tree commission at this time would not help it. And and even if you appointed somebody brand new, there's a learning curve. And that takes a while and they only need 12 times a year. So learning curve doesn't occur quickly. So anyway, that's why I threw my hat back in the ring.
Thank you, Paul. Any questions from council on this application?
I did have the opportunity to interview Paul in committee, so I will leave the floor for other council members. But I do want to thank him, I do want to thank him for stepping up to the plate because it's been apparent through my involvement with TAC over the last few months. And I've just recently gotten to join in that he does bring a lot of institutional knowledge and a lot of good passion and experience. So I do appreciate you throwing your name in the hat.
Thank you.
Okay. And like I said, out of, out of committee, this came recommended. So if there's no further questions, we can, we can move on. Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
John, I checked again, there's still no one, the other two applicants are still not with us this evening.
Okay, thank you, John. And with that, for appointments and public resolutions, does council have any motions to make?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to appoint Paul Cosco to the tree advisory commission as recommended. Sorry, for a term expiring June 30th, 2022.
So that was a motion by Mr. Soto. I heard Mr. Dalton as the second first. So I'll give the the win to him. Questions on the motion? See none, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Paul, thank you for your continued service for the TAC. And any other appointments tonight for council?
Mr. President, just, just ask a question. I, the other applicants were advised that this meeting would, would take place, correct?
Yes, the borough staff actually copies me on the emails that are sent out to the applicants to remind them that the, the meeting is tonight for consideration to be appointed. So we have a double safety net.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Rafaello Di Napoli to the planning commission for a new term expiring March 31st, 2025.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Soto, second by Mr. Kirchner. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. And I, I thank Raf for re-upping on planning commission as well. That closes this round for public, sorry, for appointments and public resolutions. As I mentioned at the beginning of this section of the agenda, we do have other appointments or other vacancies that are available. The full list is available on the borough website and also includes the termination or the end dates for the current appointees. So you can get a sense of when vacancies may be occurring. And we can accept applications prior to positions actually being open. So again, if you have any questions, please just reach out to borough council members or our borough staff. With that, that takes us to our new business section for tonight's agenda in which we have a ZHB application and whether or not to send council representation, legal representation to the zoning hearing board meeting scheduled sometime in May, I think. Or is it April? I'm not sure.
April 21st, Mr. President.
Very good.
Well, I'll make a motion to have the borough send for representation to the April 21st ZHB meeting, determining the appeal from the, regarding the appeal of the Friends of Church Street, appeal of the zoning officer's decision concerning the Church Street project, meaning Church Street project.
I'll second. The motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion or any clarification, any questions for either staff or solicitor as well? Mr. Crack?
I've just mentioned that traditionally, when there is something that goes over to the zoning hearing board, council doesn't normally send a representation if it is in support of, and in this case, your zoning officer has provided a response that suggests that the, the project beats all of the conditions. I'm not so sure sending representation, what, what message that will send because you normally send representation to defend. And in this case, the zoning officer has already identified what the borough's position is. So I don't know if Mr., if Mr. Garner has any better clarification on that. But normally, we sit on the sidelines unless we're opposed to something that's there. So that's, that's, you need to understand the difference. We normally send representation when we're opposed to something. And that's usually when the applicant is defend, or trying to get a decision that the zoning officer has made that goes against their wishes. So this is somewhat different, somewhat backwards, actually. Chuck, I don't, I don't know if I clarified it or muddied it.
Well, Gene, I, I agree with everything that you said. This is a little bit different appeal. The zoning officer through the termination has found this project to comply with the zoning ordinance provisions. And the neighbors, and they have a right to appeal Dave's determination, they've done that. So essentially, typically the way this would operate, but council is still free to take a position if they'd like. Typically, what you would have is the neighbors would be on one side. And in this case, the applicant would be on the other side, obviously, in the determination made by zoning officer. So it is an unusual situation, we don't normally see it. And I think the way Gene explained it is accurate, but it's still your decision as to what you would like to do, whether the borough should be involved or not.
And I apologize, I should have let Chuck do an introduction on this since it's a slightly kind of, you know, not the normal phrasing. Mr. Kirk, are you at your hand?
Yes, if I may, Mr. President, that was, I, I guess that was one of the things that was left unsaid in the motion, what the borough's position would be in sending representation to, to the meeting.
And I was going to ask for clarification on that, presuming the motion went forward. I wasn't totally clear with the motion made by Mr. Moore as to whether or not the position of the borough was supportive of the zoning officer's determination, which is typically what happens. But again, this is a little bit different factual scenario is how the matter got to the zoning hearing board.
I was, I, I made the motion to ask for representation in part to encourage the discussion as to what direction we would give the solicitor with regard to this, with regard to this appeal. And in part because I didn't know whether we are obligated to instruct you to defend the zoning hearing board of the zoning officer's decision or whether we are free to provide other kind of direction.
You, you are not obligated to do anything. You're obligated to take a position as council sees fit, whether that supports the zoning officer's determination or doesn't. I would say it may be a little unusual not to support your zoning officer. But again, that's council's prerogative. It has an automatic right to become a party. And if you choose to send me to go to the hearing, I would certainly want specific parameters to understand exactly what the borough's position is, so it can be presented in the proper fashion to the zoning hearing.
I'd like, if possible, to get that, thank you, Mr. President. I, I'd like for that to be clarified with, you know, maybe in, in this, in this motion. Brian, not to put you on the spot, or Mr. Moore. But if you're the motion maker, if they, maybe if that's the, you know, one direction or another, I think would be appropriate as a part of this.
As part of the motion. Or I amend it. So it would be amended in the motion to recommend that the, I hereby recommend, I hereby amend my motion to have a representation at the zoning hearing board to support the the finding by our zoning officer that the Main Street project complies with the SALDO and to and to say that that is the opinion of the Borough Council.
And Mr. Moore, if I could correct you, we're not, we're not talking SADO here. We're talking, so it would be in support of the determination of the zoning officer that the project is zoning compliant. If that.
My, I hereby amend my, my amendment to to, to align with what you just said in terms of what we're supporting.
And I'll maintain my second along with that.
All right, so.
So we have an amended motion. Do we have further discussion on this motion? Or any clarification needed from council on the motion since, again, this is not a, not quite the normal thing for every month?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Soto.
The, the zoning officer will, our zoning officer, borough's zoning officer will be at the zoning hearing board meeting, correct?
Yes.
I, I think if, yeah, I, I would probably imagine that that's more than enough representation for the, the nature of this, this meeting. I'll probably vote aye on this.
So that's one of the. If we. If we conclude that we, we don't need representation, then I understand.
Yeah. I would agree, I would agree with Mr. Soto. I say let the, let the decision stand on its merits.
Well, you know, by Robert's rules, we, we need motions to have discussions. So I appreciate the motion and do we have any further discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion falls one seven. So that would mean we will not be sending our solicitor to the zoning hearing.
That's the way I understand it, Mr. President, as a result of the, correct?
Okay. Again, not, not the, not the normal process or not the normal item for us every month. So I appreciate everybody working through that. Next up on our agenda under new business, we have a, consider a request from the Phoenix area school district to allow lights to remain on, on Washington Field from 11:00 PM on April 30th till 2:00 AM on May 1st, this year, this coming, the, the end of this coming, I guess, this month. And this is to provide lighting for their open air post-prom party. Believe there's a, so we have a letter in our packet addressing this. What is council's pleasure for this agenda item?
I'll make a motion to approve the request from the Phoenix area school district to allow lights to remain on in Washington Field from 11:00 PM on April 30th to 2:00 AM on May 1st, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Ms. Berkeley. And I know in speaking with staff leading up to this, Lieutenant Marshall has been working with the school district's layout parameters for both notifying the neighbors in the adjoining streets. I believe he went down two streets in every direction, possibly more. And I believe as the letter, I believe the letter states that, you know, in case of rain, this will be a, a canceled event. So Lieutenant Marshall, if you have any, any points to add to this, since I know you're working closely with the school district.
Yeah, I've been at the events in past years past. It'll be fine. There'll be adult chaperones there. There'll be a heavy police presence. It's usually of no concern. And then they close promptly and leave.
And I, I appreciate the clarification that the neighbors would be notified. I was going to ask that question. I did see in the letter too, that there will be measures put in place just to be COVID compliant. So I appreciated that, that, that was covered as well.
That's correct. Yes. And then, then I'll see to, we'll do so a radius around the school, around the field and notify the residents of it if council approves it.
Mr. Kirchner.
Mr. President, I believe the, the lighting ordinance is under, yeah, well, it is the lighting, lighting ordinance. Can we grant waivers to our ordinances on on requests like this? I mean, do, do we have that authority?
To answer your question, yes, Mr. Kirchner, you do. Borough staff doesn't, but council does.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm not sure, Lieutenant Marshall, you might, you, you will probably know, I don't believe there's much in the sense of amplified sound expected. I'm not sure if you had addressed that with the school district.
I'll follow up tomorrow and get you an email with Dr. Fegley Superintendent to find out exactly what's being utilized. In past, it's been indoors this time because of social distancing. They want to do it outside. But we'll make sure it's at a low volume.
And I know he, he had mentioned that the, the prom itself is off-site. So the, this is just a, a small event post-prom.
Correct. Yes, it's an opportunity, it's an opportunity for the kids to get together in a safe environment and just have some fun.
Mr..
Mr. President?
Yes.
I, I don't know if it's appropriate, but the principal, Dr. Craig Parkinson is on, in the waiting room. If we had specific questions.
Any members of council have specific questions or any other comments on this motion?
I believe mine.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Berkeley.
I believe mine have been answered like I stated before, but I do thank Dr. Parkinson for being here and available if we did.
Yes, and I trust Lieutenant Marshall will, will work out the best, the rest of the details as, you know, seen fit. So. Okay, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. That concludes our section for the new business on our agenda tonight. We do have two resolutions for members of committees that have retired from committee service. So what is council's pleasure pertaining to these two resolutions?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion acknowledging Craig Brown's service as a member and chair on the Tree Advisory Commission.
A second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Soto. Questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. With that, I will read into the record our resolution of gratitude for the public service of Craig Brown as a member of the chairman of the Tree Advisory Commission for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Craig Brown served diligently and honorably as a member and chairman of the Phoenixville area, sorry, Phoenixville Tree Advisory Commission since October 14th, 2014. And whereas Mr. Brown provided an invaluable service to the Phoenixville Tree Advisory Commission during that time. And whereas Phoenixville Borough Council wishes to express its thanks and full appreciation to Craig Brown for all of his efforts and commitment to the Tree Advisory Commission while performing his duties. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that Craig Brown is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his commitment and efforts in performing his duties and further does best, does offer best wishes to his future endeavors passed on this day, April 13th. Next on our agenda, we have a resolution, we have a second resolution tonight. And what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to consider the resolution acknowledging Dave Thomas's service as a member of the Planning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss in recognition of Dave Thompson. Any questions on the motion?
I, I do have a question. Did we purposely leave off the historical and architectural review board there as well? Was that to be a second, a second separate motion?
So the, the harbor is a liaison role of the planning commission.
Okay.
So it sort of gets bundled into the, the one position.
As long as David's getting full credit.
Yes. Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. And with that, I will read this resolution for the public record. A resolution of gratitude for the public service of David Thompson as a member of the Planning Commission and the Historical Architectural Review Board for the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania. Whereas Dave Thompson served diligently and honorably as a member of the Phoenixville Planning Commission and the Historical and Architectural Review Board since March 15th, 2017. And whereas Mr. Thompson provided an invaluable service to the Phoenixville Planning Commission and Historical and Architectural Review Board during that time. And whereas Borough Council wishes to express its thanks and full appreciation to David Thompson for all of his efforts and commitment to the Planning Commission and the Historical and Architectural Review Board while performing his duties. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Phoenixville that David Thompson is recognized and publicly acknowledged for his commitment and efforts in performing his duties and further does offer their best wishes in his future endeavors passed this day by Borough Council, April 13th. Thank you, Craig, and thank you, David, for your service on our boards and committees. Well, is that our resolution section of the agenda? We do not have any public hearings scheduled for tonight. So with that, we'll move into reports out of committees, boards and commissions. First up, we have Mr. Moore with our planning commission.
The April Planning Commission meeting was canceled. So we have no actions out of that. We are still currently, as I understand, looking at the minutes, the resolution concerning the Main Street Lofts, 34 South Main Street was tabled. So do we need a motion to return it to the floor? We were in the middle of, I believe, Borough Council discussion of the resolution.
I'll defer to Chuck on the formal answer.
I think, I think it automatically comes back onto the agenda, why it's listed. And I guess for even more, just support, the council is required to act tonight because you're up against the time deadline under the MPC. So it was tabled till tonight, and I think you're free to, to start the discussion or make whatever motion you choose to make.
So we don't need a motion where it's, it's up for approval as of the previous.
Yes, but it still needs a motion of council as far as what council wants to do with, with the project. Okay.
Right. Okay. So being in the course of the discussion, my first question, I believe, is to, to Chuck is, since this is in front of the zone, this determination of the zoning is in front of the zoning hearing board, if we make a decision tonight to approve, for instance, and then the zoning hearing board reverses the findings of our zoning officer, what, what then happens?
The plan cannot be developed. The plan cannot be approved or recorded unless or until the applicant would then obtain appropriate zoning relief for the project. So there are two separate courses of action. You're looking solely at the components of the subdivision and land development ordinance, the zoning ordinance and the applicability of the zoning ordinance takes the different track to the zoning hearing board. So if you approve this, it is actually, I mean, again, you've approved it, but it still has to be zoning compliant. You have no control over that. That rests with the zoning hearing board.
Zoning and, and as, I don't know that everybody knows this, but the zoning hearing board is a separate body and we do not have oversight. Well, we make appointments to that body. We do not have oversight of that body. It is two separate bodies. Is that the safest way of putting it, Chuck?
Yes, yes, that is correct, President. It's a separate body, statutorily, and they have their authority to interpret the zoning ordinance and grant variances. So the matter we discussed earlier is before them listed for a hearing on April 21st.
I see that Dave Belker is signed in. I, I have a question if he could be, it would be helpful for me in helping to understand the waiver that we're granting. I have tried reading the paperwork and I, the, the various elements of the packet and the reports of the, the engineer and Rayot. If it would be possible for Dave to summarize what elements of the SADO we are granting waivers to, based upon everything I've read. The elements of the SADO that we are grasping, being asked to grant waivers to, according to what I've read, do not apply to this project. And therefore, they can't be applied to this project. So if you could try and help summarize for this, because I remain unclear.
Certainly, thank you. Essentially, the subdivision and land development ordinance is established to regulate and create, you know, rules in how to develop essentially raw land. It's kind of reserved for that, I'd say, or it's more frequently is used for that. There are portions of the land development, subdivision and land development ordinance that do address items that do come up in redevelopment projects like this. So while, let's put a, a number to it as a, for instance, if there are 250 rules in the subdivision and land development ordinance, there's 230 of them that have no bearing on a project that has no earth moving, that has no site work plan, that has no new building plan, that has no stormwater changes. This is an existing building that is a change of use that, under the strictest interpretations of what land development is, which is why it's before you, it comes before the body. It comes before the planning commission. And the way that the applicant has, and this is on a previous project as well, and a different one, has requested essentially waivers of all of the design criteria of the subdivision and land development ordinance because they don't apply, because of the nature of the project, except for the items that they've agreed to address, which is utility placement, surveys, things like that. So the approval that you would be bringing forward tonight would be waiver of the ordinance except for the items that were, that have been addressed satisfactorily through the planning commission process and the reviews with the borough engineer.
Okay. So we are granting waivers to things that do not apply.
I'll, and I'm sorry to interject again, as you're well aware, going through the, with other projects that are on a much larger scale and have some acreage to them. And many times we'll go through items of the, we'll go through items of the borough engineer, and they'll be essentially listed as not applicable, right? You could have a 10-page review letter from the borough engineer and the topic is, is, you know, at least that subsection is not applicable. And then you'll see four, five, or six, or maybe seven to 10 waivers of the 200 rules on the resolution and request. So instead of requesting 250 waivers, and again, I'm just picking that number out as a, it's a long ordinance. Instead of having a 40-page-long resolution listing the waivers of all of the regulations, this is a, a whole part, you know, relief of those, except for the items that they've already worked out and agreed will, and, and have presented on the plan and worked out with the engineer. So it's the reverse way of doing it. Instead of requesting 250 waivers, it's a waiver of everything except for the things that they agree to.
Okay. So then if we were to refuse to grant the waiver, and I don't know, I think this is a question for, this is a question I think I want to ask Chuck. I'm asking Chuck, and I don't know whether you can answer it or not, but if we were to refuse to grant the waiver of things that they, that don't apply, would we be at risk of the developer taking legal action against the borough? taking legal action against the borough?
Certainly, you would be at risk because the developer would argue that I don't need the waivers because they're not applicable. Obviously, what Dave is talking about, what we're talking about here is a legal issue that ultimately a court would decide whether or not the waivers are applicable or not. So are you at risk? I would say, yes, you would be at risk.
And the only basis for us rejecting waivers is we want them to do it because we can't reject the way granting the waivers for the other concerns that people have expressed. As this is my understanding, and I don't know whether you can offer an opinion on this or not, but the concerns about the density, the number of people, the 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 trash container issue and some of the issues that have been aired publicly. Those are not things that because the rest of the project is in compliance is not a reason for us to reject the project.
I would agree with the way you phrase that, Mr. Moore. Many, many of the concerns, and again, I'm not taking a position one way or the other, but there are certain limitations that council has and what it can base a denial on. And many of those concerns were non-related to SALDO. They were related to zoning, some building codes, things that are not necessarily before you in a process when you're going through the land development, which is what you're doing now. So I hope I was able to respond to your question.
Yes, you were.
So Chuck, just as a follow-up to that, those type things may be considered if this were to come to us through a zoning perspective. Is that a correct understanding?
It's your question. I'm sorry, Ms. Berkeley.
No, that's okay. I appreciate you clarifying. So obviously, tonight, the decision we're making is from a planning perspective. It's on the subdivision of land and it's very clear to me from your explanation and from my my understanding from the packet and the research and following all this, that the zoning hearing aspect and the planning aspect are very separate things. So I appreciate that. I also understand the discussion and appreciate Mr. Moore's question and your response that these concerns are not something that fall under planning and subdivision. Would these concerns come up later if we were to look at this or something would come from zoning hearing to us?
Potentially, but if if the zoning hearing board agreed with Mr. Balker, those zoning issues would be addressed, so it wouldn't be coming back to you. Other words, it'd be compliant. If the zoning hearing board reversed and found that some elements of the zoning were not satisfied by this project, then the applicant would have to come back and seek relief from the zoning ordinance, probably in the form of variances. And at that point, you could take a position as to whether or not you felt the variances would be warranted, given the concerns of the residents. So again, we're speculating as to what will happen at the zoning. So it could come back to you or it may not.
Thank you. That clarifies. It would be dependent upon that.
Yes.
Before we delve much deeper, we should have a motion for for formal discussion here.
Oh, okay.
I think we established enough background. I just want to, I know Zoom is different, but try to keep some Robert's rules going.
Yeah, well, I wasn't sure because we were it had been tabled and now we were back on the floor, but I'll make a motion that we resume discussion of the application for the approving the preliminary final land development plan known as Main Street Lofts LLC.
Continue the conversation. I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion. So now now let's delve into the details. If that motion satisfies Chuck.
The, I understand the motion is to approve the resolution. Is that what the motion was? I think, but I don't want to, I'm not sure.
Yes, it was.
Okay.
That's what I meant it to be anyways.
Wanted to clarify that. So so now we can resume discussion, you know, questions for council. Mr. Kirchner, I believe you were up next.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. With regard to the resolution, section three A states the waivers, chapter twenty-two, subdivision and land development of the code of the Borough of Phoenixville. With the exception, with the exception of requirements for parking, sewer, solid waste disposal and handicapped accessibility. Borough Council waives the requirement. So these are the requirements we are not waiving, parking, sewer, solid waste disposal and handicapped accessibility. You look and and you look above that, the section above that too, conditions of approval. It, you know, two conditions with regard to the sidewalk. Condition D is solid waste disposal. And that's where I think with regard to the phrasing of this resolution, it's rather vague. There, there is nothing that says in there how many, how many toters per unit or anything specific about storage, except that they must be secure. With regard to the parking, there's a five-year, has to be at least a five-year lease for twenty-three parking spaces. So those are as I look at it, those are the two conditions of approval that we can we can either do some work on or if we find them unsatisfactory, we can reject this application. But for me, as far as as far as the phrasing of condition two D, that's D isn't delta. I, I think the the wording of that is is far too vague for for my taste and with regard to E. E echo, to E echo. A five-year lease, then we get to issues, what happens in year six. So.
So I, sorry, sorry, Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, so I and 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 there were some good points raised, you know, with regard to the the living unit on the ground floor. You know, how do we get around that? Now the resolution doesn't say anything about that, except that the the plan has to comply with the with with all zoning requirements, which is a caveat. Basically throwing this back to the zoning hearing board for determination. So and there you know, there, there are a number of other things that are not addressed in the in the app, in the, in a resolution as it's presented to us. So so there, I know the bottom line is, I, I think there are, there are a number of questions there and with with the way this resolution is is worded, I I don't see how it provides enough protection, enough guarantee that what we expect to be done will be done. Thank you, Mr. President.
Absolutely. And just, I'm not sure if everybody in council had a chance to to check it out. I know in working with the applicant and staff, there, there was an FAQ actually posted on the Borough website under the projects under consideration tab that did dive into a number of these concerns that that have been raised and it was developed using the comments and feedback we've received from residents and and during the planning process. So I know things pertaining to the solid waste handling were actually discussed and this FAQ was was then, you know, answered by the applicant. So a number of those items that have been raised can be, can be found there. Also, on that note, the applicant is available and in the waiting room. If Jen can bring the applicants in, I think now would be a good time in order to address any questions directly from council. And well, Jen does that if if there's any other general questions or other comments from council on this application, on this motion.
Thank you, Mr. Ewald, and thank you for pointing out the frequently asked questions because I think that does provide a lot of clarity to a lot of the things that the public has raised and in questions we as council have had. I do think that the FAQ does speak to the solid waste and that a lot of the questions that I heard about, mention of toters were addressed when we last spoke about this and it is addressed in the FAQ. I don't know that parking is addressed is in as detail in the FAQ as I read it here in the resolution. So if the applicant is here, maybe we could possibly check in with them a little bit about that. I hate to beat a dead horse. But I do think it's it's worth asking because I appreciate Mr. Kirchner kind of pointing out the the specification in the resolution versus what is in the FAQ and what's been discussed in prior meetings.
And if I may, I would, I would like to add, the FAQ was one thing, but we're approving a resolution.
Absolutely.
And we're approving language in the resolution and we can make that language as tight and as specific as we want.
Agreed. And John and Sean are both here from the, from the application end. So I believe Dale is still in the waiting room. We can leave him there for the time being, but if anybody has any questions specific to the VASH program. But as we, as he meant, as it was mentioned earlier, that the VASH program doesn't fall under our purview for planning purposes. The actual tenant use is not something we're here to decide on. I think Chuck will, will would say, I think that's the right way of putting it. So with that, any questions from council for the applicants pertaining to either the resolution or or any aspect of this project? Yes.
If I may, Mr. President. Yeah, I mean, I got to tell you, the the density bothers me. I know, I know what that building's like. I climbed those stairs. They're very high stairs. I don't and and I think if if a tenant moves in there on the third floor and then the tenant has some kind of accident, some kind of health issue and they're unable to to get up those stairs, what happens? I, I and from my understanding is there's only one group of stairs in the back of the building. I, I would ask if there are plans to put stairs in the front of the building to provide two exits in the case of an emergency. Any other question I have is how come there's no elevator? In here, why, why aren't you putting an elevator in? You want to put the twenty-two units in here, eleven units on each upper floor? Why not knock out a unit on each floor and put a yellow, an elevator in? That, that's the, that would, one, it would address the ADA accessibility issue. And two, it would provide another egress in the event of an emergency, although in in most emergencies, the elevators, the electricity is not
Correct.
Functional. So I mean, I, I, I can, my concern is there's a fire in here and twenty-two veterans are dead. I'm, I'm just going to put it out there.
Well, I understand your concerns, Mr. Kirchner. You know, my name's John Hassan. I'm the architect for the project. I represent the owners. And we are going to bring the building up to full current codes, sprinkler systems, firearms. All the walls are going to be fire-rated. The floors will be fire-rated. There is one internal stair tower that's existing. The second way out would be the fire escape that currently exists on the side of the building. There will be a center-loaded hallway that will connect both of those stair towers so that every individual will be able to exit their apartment and go to one of two exits, either the fire escape or the stairs. Again, the building will be fully sprinkled and will meet all current building codes. So I hope that helps to answer some of the concerns regarding fire and life safety.
Right.
Far as sorry, as far as ADA concerns go, the ADA requires that all developments up to twenty-five apartments, only one of them needs to be handicap compliant. So we are meeting both the ADA code as well as the Pennsylvania State Handicap Accessibility Code in terms of that.
So why no elevator?
The building is historic and it is exempt from requiring an elevator.
It's exempt from requiring an elevator, but you could, you may put one in.
We, we could, absolutely. Yes, we could. However, though, the cost of an elevator is is quite a burden on a project such as this.
I think that answers my question. Thank you.
I know this has been discussed quite a bit. I would like, you know, I echo Rich's point on the elevator. It's not a demand I would place, but considering the twenty-year lease with the county housing authority and knowing that that during redevelopment is is your cheapest time to install something like that, I would like you to reconsider and reexamine what the elevator cost would would be and how it would fit in because you know, somewhat ironically, the reason why this is no longer a Masonic Lodge is because when they renovated the building, they did not put in an elevator. They saved the, the, the money and and ended up having a membership that couldn't get to the membership hall. You know, a few decades later. And this was, this was told to me by the, 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 you know, one of the last people in charge of the Masonic Building before they sold it. So it is something that, you know, I, I know not all the residents are looking to age in place. I know that this isn't necessarily like a permanent, long-term position for, but in terms of the housing contract with the county, it sounds like a strong argument could be made for the installation of of a, of a lift system within the building, you know, during the, the time of construction. And I also understand, you know, this is something, you know, as a building permit issue, you know, this wouldn't have to come back to council. This would be something that could be designed within the building and and I believe that would just be a sign off as a building permit to install an elevator, but if it's going to be done, now's the time to do it. That's, that's my main thing. I do think that the questions have been that that I've received from residents have largely been answered. And that's why we did provide that, that FAQ that the applicants did take the time to to provide feedback on. And I, I think it did help you know, answer a number of the things that that the trash is being handled by a private hauler. It's not a issue of fifty toters at any given day. So with that, I, other, other questions from council, as I mentioned, we also still have Dale in the, in the audience. If anybody had a housing authority question. But while we have the applicants here, any questions?
So thank you, Mr. Ewald. I would echo what you just expressed about the elevator. Certainly, and and understand, you know, what's in our purvie and all of that, but would just echo, I think you articulated that very well. So thank you. And I do think that we did talk quite a great deal last time about the trash. I do think that was addressed and is outlined in the FAQ was really, we, we did outline that a lot in our last discussion. I know it's not something that we can really hold you to, but in the resolution, it does outline that a five-year lease for the parking and twenty-three parking spots would be provided. And I know just in reading the FAQ and maybe I just missed something in reading what was in my packet. I don't believe that's been provided. And I know, again, I was a cheerleader for our neighborhood and I don't want to be overly zealous with you guys. I appreciate what you're trying to do, but just living in this neighborhood. just living in this neighborhood, helping the residents navigate parking and talking with other developers, I've always said, be a good neighbor. So this is something that was stated in the resolution that came from planning that was discussed with planning. So I am again, going to put a little heat back to you guys like, hey, where is it? Where are you at with it? What are you doing to be a good neighbor? But I also, and Mr. Gardner can jump in, know what's within our privy as far as that goes.
Yes, Ms. Berkeley, Ms. Berkeley, we have heard everyone's, you know, concerns regarding the parking. We're certainly very cognizant of it and want to be good neighbors. And to answer your question, we have signed a lease for 22 spaces with the First Presbyterian Church. I believe we've provided a copy to the borough through through the zone, through the main office there with David Bockler. I'm not sure if he's made that available to everybody or not, but we do have a lease for those parking spaces.
And maybe I just missed it. So I apologize if I did. But I know also I think it's good for us to talk about and everyone to hear. And again, we can't base our decision on this. So, you know, Mr. Gardner, please tell me, but just out of curiosity, what are the terms of that? How long is it? And I, how is the cost then being transferred to the residents?
So yes, the terms are basically $100 a month for each parking spot. And each, you know, and the spaces will be made available to each and every tenant on a, you know, first come, first served basis. And and those costs will be passed on to them in their rent that they will have to pay for.
And how long is the lease?
From, I'm sorry, Mr. Sean, correct me if I'm wrong there.
No, that's correct.
Yep.
And how long will the lease? How long is the lease for the agreement with?
It generally is 12 months. However, we are working to extend that to the five year terms.
And the, and the, and the church wants us there as long as they have that site, they're going to like us to be tenants. It definitely helps the church. They're very eager to lease it. And we have dedicated parking spaces associated with with that lot. So it will be dedicated spaces, either numbered, or it will be site spaces specifically for our our building. And we, anyway, we would do a longer term lease if they would allow. We have reached out. Obviously, we got, it was great to be able to get a lease on with these guys. We still continue to be proactive on on finding alternatives if necessary. This is only about two blocks, maybe, maybe one and a half blocks from the building. So it's actually ideal. And then Dale can talk more specifically about the tenant's need for if they do need those parking, but we did hear what the neighbor said. They said they did want parking. We want to make sure that we secured spaces for the tenants if, you know, if they so, if they so desire and need that spaces.
Thank you. And I guess I would totally want to leave it to other council members. I don't want to steal the show, but obviously this is my ward. This is my neighborhood. So I am going to be a little bit more vocal. I appreciate you answering my questions tonight as well as as last time we discussed. I also would have questions for Dale. I appreciate him joining us tonight. But I want to make sure that if other council members have questions for you before we dive into anything from him, we have those answered. And also, you know, again, Mr. Gardner, if you need to provide any kind of clarification on what questions can be considered and what is just kind of informational so that accurate information is shared with the public about this project. Please certainly provide that.
No, I think so far your questions are all legitimate questions and you would have these answers. And after councils finish with their discussion, I'll have some suggestions given the comments that have been made by council. And then you guys can decide how you want to deal with this. Okay.
Anything else for, for John or Sean before I ask Jen to let Dale come in because I do have a couple of questions just about his program. I think it would be nice for the public to be able to hear about that and hear how this works. So they have some accurate information.
I think that would be a good time to welcome Dale back. As, as I mentioned earlier tonight, Dale is the head of the Chester County Housing Authority and would be working hand in hand with Sean on the actual applicants for this, for this building. So it looks like Dale's coming back into the fold here. Give him just a moment to you. There we go. Welcome back, Dale.
I've been here the whole time.
And Ms. Berkeley, you, you mentioned you had questions for Dale.
Yeah, thank you. And Dale, thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
So they, and also, I guess, thank you for the introduction, Mr. Ewald. I think some of who you are kind of got lost when you were in public participation, but I appreciate you addressing us in that manner as well. This is a little bit different of a situation. So I guess you did explain how it got to be about that you were in contact with Sean and John with the developer. So you are looking for places within Chester County that can facilitate this type of living situation for veterans, specifically working with the VA and working with the VASH program, correct? That's, that's kind of how you this came about.
Absolutely. And what, what is, is great, which is the, the number one solution we would like is if you have what are called project based vouchers. So instead of issuing a voucher to a veteran and he has to go find a private landlord to lease up with for one year and then maybe month to month after that. Instead of that, if you have something like this where you have multiple units that are under a, a contract for multiple years, it makes it much better for the veterans, for the, for the owner of the development, everything. It's, it's much better if you can do that. It's very hard to get a company to agree to something like this. They've agreed to it. I think part of it is because of their background as veterans themselves. But we're, we're kind of thrilled about it. And and once again, it's just the location for someone who is of, of fairly low income, who has no car and need, this is perfect. This is like wonderful, especially in Phoenixville with what, what is happening right now in terms of the kind of housing that is being built from, for a rental, from a rental standpoint. This is just incredible suddenly to get this, 24 units of affordable housing in downtown Phoenixville. It's amazing.
So Dale, I appreciate your enthusiasm and we obviously all love Phoenixville regardless of our position, everybody in the public on council, regardless of your position on this project, all love Phoenixville. So we appreciate that. What, how does this project compare to other projects similar within the, in the county? I appreciate the downtown piece of it. I appreciate that Phoenixville is a great place to be. I think if done well, this project could be a great opportunity for veterans because of the walkability and all of those things. So I certainly understand that. Do you find similar situations with other projects or is this unique to this particular project?
Well, I'll tell you, our last four projects, including this one. One is in Phoenixville Steel Town Village, it's 51 units of housing partially supported by vouchers and partially VASH vouchers for veterans. And you guys, I believe, I'm sure know where Steel Town Village is, a beautiful apartment complex. We, six years ago, opened a development in a little bit north in Phoenixville, Fairview Village, which is an absolutely gorgeous development of 36 townhomes that are supported by public assistance. We have other developments through, throughout the county. We have White Hall, which I'm sure I think all of you are familiar with, which is a development for veterans in Spring City. And that is another 50 units of housing, which is just remarkable as far, far as I'm concerned. So this is our fourth one. And it, it literally, it, it came from nowhere because we didn't anticipate this at all. We simply put out a project based voucher request for proposals. This company provided a reply to us. And the, the wonderful thing was when we started to say, well, would you consider putting all veterans in there? And they said yes. And I just thought that was, that was great because we have a great relationship with the veterans in Coatesville, in the, the, the location in Coatesville with the BAMC. And it just is a, it is a great project. These folks all are in need of affordable housing. They cannot afford housing on their own without some assistance at this point in time. They have basically one year that they can remain at the Veterans Administration. Then they're going to have to move on and they've all suffered some kind of disability. And yes, a lot of it, some of it has been mental disability, that kind of thing. But there's, and what's wonderful, they're supported by caseworkers at the VA. It's just a neat thing. It's worked out well at White Hall. It's worked out well in other areas of the county. So we just think this is a, a, a great fit. And it wasn't that we went out looking for it. They came to us and did this on a voluntary basis, the developers. And I think it's, it's, it's really cool that they would do this and they are, they have a rent structure that's going to be a lot lower than they probably could have gotten in downtown Phoenixville, but they've agreed to it.
So Dale, I heard you say all veterans and that that was, you know, an exciting thing about this. And I've heard talk about a 20 year agreement. So can you talk a little bit about that? Is there a 20 year agreement already settled and kind of is, is that already a done deal, so to speak? And is part of that deal to ensure that it is all veterans supported in this? This, in these units?
Absolutely. Yes. What will happen is, first of all, this has to be approved by the, the borough and that it's, it's going to happen. Once we know it's going to happen, then we agree to issue them a, an approval for a 20 year agreement. Roughly 90 days before their housing complex is completed and ready for occupancy. At that point in time, we actually sign the agreement. It's about three months before that. So they have time to bring and start to interview the prospective tenants and that kind of thing and get them in there. Once that happens, it just, it, it's, it's like White Hall, you know, within three months. Once we had that agreement in place, we had the, the 50 plus folks that live there. And that actually, that, that included families. This, this doesn't necessarily include families, but in place. So it's, it's, that's kind of the way it works. And where my Board of Commissioners is totally behind it. I'm behind it. With the current COVID-19 and the way HUD is reacting to it in the federal government. They are absolutely promoting assistance to those that are in need. So I, this is just like an absolute, absolutely perfect fit. And the, and the other thing I emphasized is earlier in this, in, in tonight is that and people were talking about parking this and parking that and park, hey, these guys and these women, they don't have any cars. So let's look at reality. They don't have any cars. They live in a hospital environment in Coatesville in the, at the VA Medical Center. Having a facility where they can walk and get the kind of things they need to live comfortably, food, their prescriptions, whatever it may be, is, is absolutely wonderful rather than being in a remote kind of location where you need a car. So I love the fact that the developers have gotten two locations where they have 22 parking spaces. But you know, if I had a lot of money to bet, I would bet if you ever needed 10 of those parking spaces, I would be astounded. So that's just my feeling. I'm just so supportive of this. This is one of the coolest proposed developments I have ever seen for our veterans.
Okay, thank you, Dale. So it would be the VA and you're in the housing authority that would be determining who received the vouchers, which would then qualify them to be able to be then apply to be tenants at this project. Is that correct?
Absolutely. We approve them. And one of the, I think one of the lovely things about this whole thing is obviously most of these, these men and women have, and they're, by the way, of the four development, of four apartment buildings out at the, on the VA campus, two of them are for women, veterans, and two are for male veterans. They absolutely are supportive of all of this from the standpoint that every veteran who will be housed there will have a caseworker assigned to them that will follow them up for as long as it takes to make sure they're stable and everything's okay.
Thank you, Dale. And then one last question. The idea of elevator and things like that came up and we talked about what's in our privy. Does the housing authority have any regulator, like regulations over that or anything that they would be requiring of the developer? That would be different than what we would require?
It's, it's funny you say that because I see Sean on the call here and I'm, I'm, I'm still pushing to have an elevator in there. And I think that, that we, we want to talk about that. It's part of the design process. I've been up those stairs myself in that building and it's, it's a little bit of a challenge. So I'm hoping we can work something out that will, will make that be something that could potentially happen in, in that building. I think because of those that do have a physical disability, not something that resulted in, results in them having to be in a specialized kind of apartment. But you know, just, you know, you're older and it's difficult to climb stairs and that kind of thing. That we're able to work something out there on that. I think we still can negotiate that and, and, and figure that out. I, I think one of the wonderful things, though, when we're trying to figure that out is because we're going to give them a long term contract with a guarantee, guaranteed income coming in. And I've done this with a lot of low income housing tax credit projects where, when, when you walk into an investor and you've got a 20 year contract in your hand to provide assistance for the rentals in a building and it involves literally millions of dollars, it really opens the door to be able to finance things. And so I'm hoping that happens here. I'm sure that will happen here also. But I just think this is, I think it's a wonderful thing for Phoenixville that, that the, the, the city has agreed to and this is the, and I think the wonderful thing too is this is a private company. This is not a company that's trying to finance all of this through low income housing tax credits. They could have easily gone the other way and made this into a world class development downtown Phoenixville at enormous rent rates. Instead, they decided to do this. And I think that is wonderful. I really respect that so much. And I'm not just saying that. I respect it.
Thank you. I've asked a lot of questions, so I certainly want to give opportunity for other council members to, to vet this as well.
Any other council members, particularly any that haven't asked any question? Rich, go ahead.
I, I just have a question. I guess it's for Mr. Grabbit about the services that the veterans who live in this building, would they, would they, does White Hall have services and, or I know the, the southeastern center up in Spring City has some services, but where would these veterans be able to go to avail themselves of the types of support services that they now have on the Coatesville campus?
Well, in every one of these veterans, they, I, I heard the number 23 tonight. I thought I was 24, but is it, Sean, is it 24 or 23?
23.
23. They all are going to be eligible for the kind of services that can be provided for, from the Veterans Administration. Every one of the persons there, everyone living there will have a caseworker. And they're all eligible for the various services that are available through the VA. So it would be the same as they have at the White Hall. So it would be the same as they have at the Whitehall development. So, and that's a requirement of this program.
My, my question is, where would they get them?
They would, well, they would get them from the Veterans Administration in Coatesville. Like Whitehall, for example, they have, everyone has a caseworker. But the other thing is that they actually have on a scheduled basis during the week, folks from the Veterans Administration that come there to meet with and help the veterans at Whitehall. So it's just a question of having some space for them to come in and meet with whoever needs assistance. But that's, and that's, it's a great question you have because that's actually a requirement of this program, the VASH program. They got to provide those services. So, and those are guaranteed as far, as part of the VASH program.
Without getting into too many, I mean, obviously, a lot of these questions are dipping into things we don't normally ask about. But since Dale is here and hopefully the applicants can humor us. Dale, you had mentioned that the building is non-smoking, as I believe all county buildings and federal buildings are. Are there any other rules or stipulations? You know, because a number of these questions were asked during, during the last few months of this project. And I figure you're probably the quickest answer on that.
Every building that we supply assistance for, whether it's public housing or project-based housing apartments, is non-smoking. It's up to the owner as to whether or not there can be an outside facility or something else to permit that. It depends upon the space, the location and all of that. There are federal rules as to how far, if you have a smoking facility outside a building or next to a building, how far it can be from the building. So that's, that's done upon the kind of building it is and where it's located. Like in our public housing, most of our developments have smoking facilities outside the building in certain locations. We have one public housing development that is so with no space around it, basically, that you cannot do that with. So, but that is absolutely guaranteed. And in fact, the Housing Authority of Chester County was one of the, in 2013, one of the first housing authorities in the entire United States that entered into a no-smoking arrangement for all the units we owned and all the units we provided management or voucher assistance to. So that, whoever said that tonight, that was so totally wrong, it was unbelievable.
And I'll turn to John on this one. As the, as the project architect is, you know, you knowing this building better than any of us at this point, is a, is an elevator technically feasible in this building?
Technically, it could be placed there, yes.
Okay, as a, I would say as a less-than-active-trained firefighter at this point, I can speak that the stairs are a bit steep. And I have to use the stair stretchers before. I would like you to consider and look into this and work with Dale. And obviously Sean is the applicant. I think this is a great project and it's made even better if, if there's a commitment to building the elevator. Just, you know, just knowing the project history or the building history that it was part of the demise of the Masonic Club itself. I think that that is the warning to heed that providing this will provide the longevity and, and, you know, answer a lot of the questions and concerns that folks have raised.
Sure, absolutely. We'll definitely take a look at that very closely. One of the things we have considered, which may be a little more feasible for us from a affordability standpoint, is a chairlift that simply allows a person to ride up the stairs.
It's certainly, and that's, that's what the Masons did. And, you know, the long-term answer didn't, or it was a short-term solution and had a long-term answer to it.
But. Agreed. There are definitely some ways to consider this and we'll certainly do our best to take a look at that for sure.
We have other members of council here tonight. Any other questions for the applicants, the architect or Dale? Okay. Seeing no other questions from, from council, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six-two.
Thank you.
Moving on with our agenda tonight, sorry, Mr. Moore, anything else out of planning commission?
No, as I said, the.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Moore, before I let Mr. Moore speak, Chuck, you had, you had mentioned, and it's been a while since, a long bit of dialogue, you had mentioned wanting to comment. Or is that no longer relevant? I'm sorry.
It's no longer relevant, Mr. President. You took the vote. So anything that I would have added really makes no difference now. Thank you.
Mr. Moore, planning commission?
There is nothing else out of planning commission. The meeting was canceled.
Thank you. Moving on, we have Historical Architectural Review Board with our liaison, Mr. Weiss.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First, coming out of Harb this month, I'd like to make a motion to consider the approval of the Certificate of Appropriateness for an awning renovation request for 21 Gay Street, as recommended in Harb 6-0 per the action memo of April 5, 2021.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on the application for the awning on 21 South Gay, or 21 Gay Street? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Weiss?
Yes, next, I'd like to make a motion to consider the approval of the Certificate of Appropriateness for a hardscaping request for 101 Bridge Street, as recommended in Harb 7-0 per the action memo of April 5, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Moore for some hardscaping in front of the superintendent's building on Bridge Street. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Weiss?
Yes, next, I'd like to make a motion to consider the approval of the Certificate of Appropriateness for a sign request for 176 Bridge Street, as recommended in Harb 7-0 per the action memo of April 5, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Soto. Questions on this application or this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Weiss?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Next, I'd like to make a motion to consider the approval of the, or make a motion for the approval of the Certificate of Appropriateness for a sign request for 374 Hall Street, as recommended in Harb 7-0 per the action memo of April 5, 2021.
Second. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Weiss, I heard Mr. Soto is the second. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Weiss?
Yes, and as the final item out of Harb this month, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the Certificate of Appropriateness for a sign request for 420 Bridge Street, as recommended in Harb 6-0 per the action memo of April 5, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Weiss, second by Mr. Kirchner. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries eight-zero. Mr. Weiss?
Yep, thank you very much, Mr. President. That is it out of the Historical Architectural Review Board. Our next meeting will be May 3 at 5:00 PM via Zoom.
Thank you. It's always exciting to see new businesses opening up.
Absolutely.
Mr. Kirchner with Regional Planning Committee.
Yeah, so try to keep it short, Mr. President. We had a presentation from the Chester County Water Resources Authority with regard to a grant application for the, from the Department of Community and Natural Resources to update the county watersheds plan. And I believe the borough sent a letter of support for that. A couple of things happening in the region. East Pike Land has worked on an ordinance for workforce housing. We heard a little bit about that earlier this evening from Mr. Grabbit. The planning committee found the ordinance generally in compliance with the regional plan and also in Charlestown Township. Beyond Meat, formerly Devault Foods, is received, compliance, a letter of compliance with the regional plan for expansion of their plant in Charlestown Township. From, I believe, from adding something like 50,000 square feet to an 80,000 square foot, square foot factory there in Devault. So that's it, that's all I got.
Thank you, Rich. And yeah, it's going to be 130,000 square foot building. That was a big plan. I looked over the notes the other day. That's more jobs, it's good. And then I believe we had the letter of support under the manager's file for the water resource. So we'll move on that later on.
Yeah.
Next, next on our agenda, we have Rec Board, Ms. Dugan.
Okay, I'm happy to tell you that we are, the Rec Board is working on updating the comprehensive plan and possible projects, new projects for the fund fund. In fact, they met with the Community Garden Group and are working with them on cleaning up the area and putting a plan together for next season, next year. Then we have a couple of programs growing, going on, even though we still have the COVID thing going on. We've got Youth CrossFit, which is a socially-distanced outdoor thing on Saturday mornings at Reeves Park for 13 to 18-year-olds, and that's free. There is yoga in the park still going on and all abilities. Class that's at Reservoir Park, Thursday evenings from 6:00 to 7:00 and Sunday mornings from 10:00 to 11:00. And it's a $10 drop-in fee, Bring Your Own Mat. And then finally, for May, we're trying to do Family Night Out still, but now they're still socially distanced. So we have, in honor of Mother's Day, submissions are due by Friday, May 7, 2021. And send it to D Winstone@phoenixville.org. Nominate a woman or mother in the community that has gone above and beyond during these times. Write a brief four-to-six-sentence paragraph on why this person should be selected and what they have done that is kind during the pandemic. Three winners will be selected and each will win a $50 gift card to a local Phoenixville restaurant. But, you know, that's all I have right now. Hopefully, we'll be coming out of this and there'll be more to report in the future.
Thank you, Dana. With that, we'll go to BAC with Mr. Soto.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing, I have nothing to report out of BAC. Looking forward to a fuller report next month.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. And Ms. Berkeley with our TAC update.
Yeah, we have a lot of exciting things going on with TAC. This is the season where we'll start to see leafing, so they will be getting out and about and looking at trees. They also have a planned reprint, replanting, volunteer replanting that'll be happening on April 24, which is exciting. They're able to do that socially-distanced and taking precautions. I know they're excited to get back into it because last year they weren't able to. There's logistics being worked out on potentially having a volunteer watering program to support some of the new trees that'll be planted, in addition to what the borough is able to do. And then later in the agenda, we are excited that we, as council, will be voting on an arborist. So I know that the TAC has been in support of that. We heard Paul talk about that earlier. So that is all exciting stuff coming out of the TAC.
Thank you, Ms. Berkeley. With that, we'll move on to council action, refer to council, from council committees, and we'll go back to Ms. Berkeley with police personnel and public safety.
I should have just stayed unmuted. My dog's not barking, so. What, we don't have any action to report. But again, there are, like we commercialized earlier, there are several commissions and committees that do have vacancies and we encourage the public to look at those, reach out to us, reach out to your council member if you're interested. And then we do have a nice discussion with anybody that is applying via that committee, so I would encourage that.
Thank you. And we'll go back to Mr. Soto with Parks and Rec Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a couple of items to talk through the agenda today. But the first one I'd like to give to Ms. Dugan as a longtime friend to Pat Nattle. I'll let her take the floor.
Thank you so much, Edward, or Mr. Soto. I am thrilled to make a motion, I have plenty to say afterwards, but I'm thrilled to make a motion to rename Friendship Field, Pat Nattle Field.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Dalton. Questions on the motion?
Okay, I'd like to continue.
Let me, let me just go to Mr. Kirchner real quick.
If I may, may I offer an amendment that we name the field Pasqua, quote, Pat Nattle Senior Field?
Has a good ring to it.
I have to agree that that's kind of like, you know, his actual name. So, I mean, we should consider it at least, you know, even though everybody knows him as Pat.
Do you accept the amendment? Dana?
Sure.
Mr. Dalton is the second, or?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Kirchner, on that?
No.
Okay, now, now back to Ms. Dugan.
We'll get back to you later. I just would have mentioned that I have, I've known Pat for a really long time and he used to be known as Mr. Softball. This is way before my day. He was a legend in this town before I got here. And for example, and I've got plenty of notes here, so bear with me. He was 46 years on the Rec Board, including over 20 as chair. Originally, he worked for the Streets Department here from '67 to '97. And then four years after that, he worked for the Water Department. He participated and managed our softball league, playing and managing since the 70s. And he even had a tryout with the Reds that probably not many people know. He was known as a long ball hitter. In fact, I heard a story just the other day about, at one point, he was, they went out to Lancaster for one of the travel team games and it was really hot and they, you know, he was managing it, he had everybody else playing, but he wasn't feeling well that day, sitting with a towel over his head. And finally, they asked him to come in, they were losing. They came and asked him to come in as a pinch hitter. And of course, he hit a home run, ended up winning the game for them, comes back in the dugout, puts the towel back over his head and says, okay, what else do you need? I mean, it was always like that with him. He was always the guy who got everything, got things done. He was the person that everybody knew to go to and he didn't make a big deal of himself. Everybody just knew that he was going to deliver. And I'm sure Rich could add to a lot of my experiences with him.
Well, I'm, yeah, thank you. I've known Pat for, for a long, long time. I remember when he was president of the AFSMI unit for the borough employees. And when he, when he worked at the Streets Department, this is something that our current borough manager and Public Works Director might cringe at. But word was in Phoenixville, when Pat worked for the Streets Department, if you wanted something done, you didn't go to the manager or the street superintendent, you went to Pat Nattle. And he got it done for you, so. I mean, he's just, he's, he's just Mr. Phoenixville, Mr. North Side, he's from the North Side. So, you know, we're always proud to claim, claim our stellar athletes. Pat was inducted into the Amateur Softball Association of PA Hall of Fame in 2000 for his play in Men's Fast Pitch, but also as an umpire and an administrator for slow pitch softball. And the word I get, I did not see him play. But I heard from people who, who did see him play that he could, he could do it all. He was a five-tool player. He could run, he could hit, he could field. And and he did a lot of that. At Friendship Field up here where all the softball was played back in the day when there was a city championship. Game. A city championship between the winner of the Y League and the winner of the the rec league. So. So Pat is. And and he's, he's just a great guy. You know, having, having been raised by a bunch of Italian uncles myself, I can tell you that. You know, I just love when I, whenever I get to talk to Pat, talking to him because he's so direct. And and that that's something I. I, I've always loved in him. So. So it's, I really think it's appropriate. Like I said, he's, he's done, he's done so much for softball in this town. He did so much up at that field there. He did so much for recreation in this community that I really think it's appropriate that we name this field for him.
Thank you, Rich. The middle ward is proud to claim him now. And with that, any other questions or comments on this motion?
Yeah, just. I do have just, yeah, just a quick question. I'm fully in support of this for the record, but. Just are we going to refer to it everywhere by the the full name, Mr. Kirchner just outlined? Is that's what it's going to say on maps and stuff? Or will that be the official name? And maybe there would be a different colloquial name?
And I'm thinking, you know, colloquially, colloquially, that's the way you say it.
It's a fun.
Almost 10 o'clock at night. I think people will just call it Pat and out of field.
That's what I think too.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Just curious. Thank you very much.
Any other questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Thank you for making that motion, Ms. Dugan. Back to Mr. Soto.
Thank you, Mr. President. My dog is not quiet and snoring. However, I'd like to talk through the second item on the agenda, which is talking through staff's recommendation regarding the Fourth of July fireworks celebration. Staff has come back with out of parks with a potential plan for a fireworks celebration. Should we decide to have one? One of the things that was also discussed for that's not in the packet is the. The cost to. Defer for this this year. Mr. Crack, correct me if I'm wrong. Should we defer this year at this point in time? We would not incur any kind of fees or anything like that. We can roll that into next year's celebration.
Heard the discussion that we had, I guess it was a week and a half, two weeks ago. I believe that to be true. Melissa, you can back me up on that, but I believe they would extend. The deposit that we put down for for another year. Obviously, they would prefer not to. You know, just administratively, I would prefer not to only because it's just got these, you know, $5,000 hanging out there over what would be a third year. But, you know, be that as may, they, I believe they're willing to do that. Correct, Melissa?
Yeah, that's correct.
As long as we tell them tomorrow.
Yeah, we need, yes, the decision needs to be made tonight.
Sure. So given, given the the current climate of of things, I'll just, maybe I'll just make the recommendation. That we recommend that staff. Cancel the Fourth of July fireworks celebration and ask to defer that for next year's celebration.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Soto, second by Mr. Kirchner. Questions on the motion? The short version is that we'll roll the firework deposit into next year. Seeing as how we are still not accepting TCEs, it does seem like it's the responsible thing to do at this point. We don't know what July 4th is going to look like yet, unfortunately, so.
Yes, and unfortunately, Mr. President, you know, we're up against the time and today would be the last moment where we'd be able to to create such a decision. So. Thank you, Council, for entertaining that. There's nothing else out of Parks and Recreation.
Oh, still need to vote. Any other questions on the motion?
Apologies.
No problem. It's late. See no other questions. All those in favor of rolling this over to 2022?
Hi.
A vote and opposed? Okay, motion carries seven one. For deferring to 2022. And I believe you said no, no other action out of parks?
No other action, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Soto. With that, we will move on to policy. Mr. Dalton with some scheduling.
Thank you, Mr. President. So three motions tonight. My first motion would like to be, I'd like to consider schedule, to make a motion to consider scheduling and advertising a public hearing. To consider an ordinance amendment to chapter one, which is administration and government, part four bureaus, boards, commissions and agencies. E Board of Appeals is recommended in committee three zero.
I'll say.
Motion by Mr. Dalton, second by Mr. Soto. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Mr. Dalton?
And for my second motion, I'd like to make a motion to consider scheduling and advertising a public hearing to consider an ordinance amendment repealing. Chapter five code enforcement, part four electrical transformers is recommended in committee four to zero.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dalton, second by Mr. Kirchner. Questions on this motion to advertise? Mr. Soto?
I had a question about the. Reserved part of this ordinance. And what that was about? In the first section one.
What, what, what reserve does and Chuck can. Fill in if need be. You know, if you, if you go through a lot of other municipalities, you'll see ordinances with chapters, parts up at 100, 150, what have you. Because they just keep rolling things over. What we try to do is when we eliminate a part. And a in a chapter, we reserve that so that the number is still there and then we can come back again and put something else in its place. A good example was in the. The conduct where we, where we had a reserved item from years past and we backfilled it with the the citation. The issue of citation a couple of years ago. So it just gives us a lot more flexibility to to fill in without having to create all new numbering systems.
Any other questions on it, Mr. Soto? Or Mr. Chuck, did you anything you wanted to add to that? Okay.
No, the codification, people love it when you do that. So they don't have to resequence all the numbers.
Perfect. Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Back to you, Mr. Dalton.
And for my final motion for the evening, I'd like to make a motion to consider scheduling and advertising a public hearing to consider an ordinance repealing chapter 11, which is housing. And enacting an updated chapter 11, housing and real property as recommended in committee three zero.
Second.
And motion by Mr. Dalton, second by Mr. Moore. Questions or comments on this motion?
Yes, Mr. President, I do have a question. I got to thinking about this after our discussion earlier tonight with regard to an elevator. And it, would this be a place we could put in our ordinance? And and this, this may not be appropriate depending on what the, what the international building code says, but where we could put in our ordinance. A requirement for something like any. Any building with more than four or five living units on one, on any floor shall have an elevator, shall be serviced by an elevator. I don't even know if we can answer that question tonight, but.
Mr. Kirchner, I can't answer that without researching because obviously we can't, we can't override the UCC, the statewide building code, but we could, we could finally find out for you.
Good question, though.
Can we?
Well, I'm just thinking, you know.
We're scheduling a public hearing on this ordinance. Chuck, can we amend it?
Oh, oh, absolutely, absolutely. Long as we do it before we advertise it. So.
Or we, we could even, we could even table this and send it back to committee and. Have that worked on there if.
It's up to council. Sure.
If that's appropriate. Yeah.
I would, I mean, this falls under Mr. Dalton's committee, whether I don't believe there's any items pressing for this update, but. We can always amend it in the future as well, should we find. Applicable or or other consistent language.
I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second it.
Just so we. We have some time to look at that. I'm not so sure this is pressing that we need to pass this immediately.
We have a motion to table by Mr. Kirchner, second by Mr. Soto. There's no comments on motions to table. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? And it's going back to policy.
Very good then. Nothing further from policy.
Okay. Next up on our agenda, we have infrastructure, technology and transportation. Mr. Weiss.
Sorry, I'm mute. Get somebody every time. Thank you, Mr. President. Nothing out of ITT this month. Our next meeting is one week from tonight on the 20th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. With that, we'll move on to Finance Committee with a lineup here of items for Ms. Dugan.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. I'm going to bundle one through four. So I will make a motion to approve the 2020 prepaid dated to 13. 2020, I guess that's 2021, to 13, 2021, to 312, 2021, in the amount of $53,382.48. To approve the 2021 prepaid dated to 13, 2021 to 312, 2021, in the amount of $1,403,966.83. To approve the 2021 prepaid credit card statement dated to 13, 2021, to 312, 2021, in the amount of 105,600 or, yeah, $615.33. And to approve the 2021 prepaid ACH dated to 28, 2021, in the amount of $28,563.41.
Second.
There we go. Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Soto. Questions on the motion for the prepaids and ACHs? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Ms. Dugan?
I would also like to make a motion to award Arborist Consulting Services to Brandywine Urban Forest Consulting of Westchester, PA. For the initial fee of $25,790 with additional work and an hourly rate of $105. Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, seconded by Ms. Berkeley. We have, this is something we've been discussing for the last several months to to help improve the the health of our urban forest. I'm happy to see this project. Being considered with this RFP. Questions on the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Ms. Dugan?
Okay, and I'm going to, before I make this last motion that I was thinking about making here. I'm going to ask Mr. Crack if the other two. The one, like the one that we proposed at for Borough Hall and the other ones for. The wastewater treatment plant and and the water treatment plant. Were there, were they any different? Like, you know. I mean, obviously different buildings and everything, but is it, are we looking at the same thing here that we discussed at finance before?
We are. And I think when I mentioned it to finance, we knew we were getting these proposals. We just didn't have them for finance. They came in and quite frankly, their return on investment is stronger because there's a dollar for dollar, there's more money coming in from the PICO side. So the Borough Hall projects, a little over two year return on investment and in both water and wastewater treatment plants, the ROI is six months. So we. We pay this and within six months, the, the, the savings on the electrical bills is returned to us by the end of the year.
So it seems logical for me that I could bundle six, seven and eight in one motion?
Yes, you could. If, 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 yes, you could.
Okay, then, given that, I will make a motion to accept the PICO proposal for LED light conversion in Borough Hall. At the wastewater treatment plant and the LE and the water treatment plant.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Mr. Soto. This is a project I was excited to see come forward. As Ms. Dugan mentioned, we, we discussed the Borough Hall one in in finance and then. Wastewater and water actually came through in the last few days. Not only is it a seven month ROI, it's a, it's a $2,000 a month savings in those seven months. And then when the Borough Hall comes to to realization, it's a $3,000 a month total. Savings that we'll be seeing. So I think these are solid projects that that continue to lead. What the boroughs and, you know, desires for for being environmentally conscious and responsible with our energy consumption. So I do appreciate staff working diligently to get these done. I know it does take time from staff to get these projects up and running. So. Mr. Crack?
Just two things. All of the kudos to Lieutenant Marshall because he, he brought this to us and we were able to jump on it in 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 quick order. But just to be clear, the Borough Hall project falls under the general fund, but the water falls under the water fund and the wastewater falls under wastewater. So they, those, those two get set aside on the the enterprise funds. I just want to make sure that was clear.
It's good, good clarification. Any other questions on the the motion or the project? And I'm glad we got these in because I know the program ends later next month. So this was a, this is important to be able to get it considered right away. So. With that, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Ms. Dugan, anything else from finance?
That's all I have this month.
Sounds good. Thank you. With that, we will round into our second round of public participation. As we mentioned at the beginning, any members of the public wishing to take part in public participation can simply raise their hands. In the Zoom feature. Staff will call on you and you can state your name and address and then make your comment for for public consideration. We'll give this a few moments to, for, for Jen to to work the system here.
Mr. Lutzker, I have turned on your microphone, sir.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. In light of the increase in numbers of people being vaccinated for COVID-19, I'd like to see a reconsideration of the ban on public events currently running through October 1st. A council decided earlier tonight to cancel the July 4th fireworks, but that was understandable because it involved a possible loss of money and a, and a strict deadline. I'd like to ask the council reconsider the ban on events at the next meeting. I don't know if the need for the 90 day. I don't know if the need for the 90 days notice can also be considered in light of the situation. If the pandemic truly becomes bad over the summer with a spike of COVID infections, council can always cancel events, even those that are planned. If that requires a caveat that empowers councilor staff to, to make, do those cancellations, then let's do that. I'm looking for a common sense way to allow for the possibility of events starting in late summer, which would require the May meeting to allow for 90-day applications. I'd love to hear your thoughts on that.
Thank you.
With public participation, it's, it's, we'll, we'll take your comments and, and if council wants to make comment, once public participation's over, we can certainly refer to either committee or, or further discuss it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Lutz. Mr. Ewald, I have no other hands raised at this time.
Mr. President.
Mr. Soto?
I'll just note that this is something I think that the Parks and Rec Committee pretty much considers every, every month. So a, as usual, we will, we will absolutely be looking at what, where we are at that time this month.
So we can, yeah, I think, I think Parks and Rec is the, the appropriate spots. Add that to your agenda for, for May and, and we, you know, or sorry, this month. And, and discuss whether there's a, a window that can be shorter for some applicants and when you think the earliest start date could be possible. So we'll, we'll refer that to your committee, Mr. Soto. If that's okay? All right. Any other, Ms. Logan, any other comments from public at this time?
No, Mr. Ewald, still no hands raised in the public participation.
Okay. With that, we have staff reports in our packets. Mr. Manager, were there any updates from your end?
Oh, yeah. This one is going to, I hate this, it's 10:16 at, at night, but it is what it is. With regard to the, to the recreation project, the recreation center project, we have run into a very difficult situation with providing water to that site. We were originally intending to come up, up Am Street and we just cannot get the, the flows from the, the fire protection company that would satisfy fire protection of that building. We looked at the introduction of a, a fire pump, which is not something that we want to do. So we have looked at this long ways and sideways, east and west and north and south. And Brian wasn't to weigh in, if I misinterpret what I believe. But our, our, our way of getting to this is to not come up Am Street with that water line, but in fact, come off of Franklin, which unto itself doesn't have enough pressure to hit that. But something that we have been talking about for quite some time staffing-wise is maybe possibly coming off of the winding river, our Riverwalk, I'm sorry, Riverwalk Pump Station there, almost across from the soon-to-be Patton Atta Field. And then running that line back to the line on Franklin. That would put enough water pressure in there for the domestic line that we need as well as the fire suppression system that we need and also allows to get a, a fire hydrant. I believe it's at the, the entrance as you come into the site from Fillmore and the parking lot. About a $350,000 change order. We'll get about 115,000 of that back as a plus to, you know, from, from the construction site. Our proposal is that we, we do that and that $224,000 difference, we use that as we would any other improvement under the water department and use general fund from water to offset that cost to put that line into place. And it's, it's basically going to not only service that, that building, but it's going to better serve the entire area around there because it would, the original 16-inch line, as I understand it, came out of the reservoir down off gravity fed. And then when the, the new line was put in, it goes down to Richard's Lane and then that 16-inch line, it actually pumps pressure back up towards Fillmore, which obviously diminishes as you go vertical in the topography. So running across the top, this is a better way to go about that. And then anything that would come further down the road, we'd be able to tie into that line. Brian, did I miss anything other than shocking the hell out of them with the number?
No, you're correct. We were looking to do in, as a capital project in 2022, supplementing the water pressure and volume on the north side, northwest side there because of all the development. This is just going to help that cause now. It's going to help a lot of residents up in that area.
So the, 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 the question that I have for, for council, would they consider a, a budget increase to the water department to allow us to put this line in? And then, you know, we work out the other details with the, the contractor on the, on the recreation center. But we would need authorization for a budget increase to offset the cost of putting in this, is, is it a eight-inch?
Yes, it's going to be an eight-inch duct line.
Eight-inch from Riverwalk Pump back to Franklin.
Ms. Dugan, question?
I just have two, I actually have two questions. My first one is, we were going to do this anyway, and this is an enterprise fund with that water line. So this is just, we're doing it faster, like sooner than we thought we were doing with that, right? Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct.
Okay. And the other thing, this, does any of this come out of our bond money for this or are we paying for this separately?
No, the, what, there, there'll be a deduct that comes to the, to the overall project cost. But we have run into overruns because of other things that have occurred. We ran into rock when we were putting in the the system. And this is not uncommon to a, a site development. It, it happens. So at this juncture, I think what would, this would, this would do is the water would take care of getting the line put in place. The deduct that we would get from Blue Scope Construction would be applied to whatever we've received in the change orders adding to the dollar amount. So we're trying to keep our focus in on keeping in line with the budget that the bond is providing and that the, the RACP funding is providing. And so far, I don't hold me to this number, but I think we're, we're somewhere around $36,000 slightly off on a, on a, almost $9 million project. So I think we're within good numbers, you know, pragmatically, but we still need, I, I just can't make that kind of decision of my own. I, I have to come to council. I would have done this earlier, but as you can appreciate, we're at the point where we've got to make these tough decisions. If you haven't been up there, there's three tractor trailers with steel on site. So I think the steel will start going up Thursday of this week.
Any other questions on the, on the change order required? Since this is a change order, we do need a motion to approve this. It sounds like it's a, not a happy problem, but at least it, it seems like it has a, a benefit to that entire neighborhood. And it is something that we're going to do anyway, so not, not too bad for a change order.
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Soto, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. Mr. Manager, anything else tonight? Seeing no other action out of staff reports that I know of. We do not have any old business. I do not believe we have any executive session tonight. Oh, Mr. Crack?
I would like to offer that we have enough that to talk about that if, if we could possibly consider, I know nobody's ready to come back live, but if we could at least maybe set up a Zoom for April 26th, which is a Monday.
As an executive session?
Just executive session. And it's to talk about real estate and litigation.
Do we need to make a decision on that tonight in order to advertise it or is it something that us, council can get back to Jen and, and yourself?
You don't have to advertise an executive session. I would just need to know when, you know, if everybody's available. And, you know, it doesn't have to be seven o'clock at night. It could be, you know, whatever time, just, we would just need a day or so in advance, right, Chuck? Just to, I think, yeah, 24-hour clock or something.
No, no advertisement requirement. We just have to announce the executive session whenever evident.
And there's no. Sorry.
No committee conflicts that day?
Brian was asking if there's any committee conflicts on that night, and I do not believe we have any committee conflicts for the 26th.
Not on the fourth Monday of the month, not, not committee conflicts. The only thing that I would say, Dana, your rec board meets, is that the rec board night? Or do you meet, or, or do you meet on the night?
We meet at six, we meet at 6:30, but I think it's next week, right?
We meet on the 19th.
Okay, so you're good.
Yeah.
I, I was just going to say, I can put a due to poll out for sometimes and then everyone can give us our feedback on that. If that's more helpful.
I think that'd be helpful. Just, I don't want to have anybody on the spot have to commit to a time. But if, if you can reach out to everybody to tomorrow, we'll see if we can get this scheduled. With that, is there anything else for the good of the order?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion by Mr. Soto.
Second.
Second by Mr. Weiss. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight, zero. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night.
Everybody have a nice night.
Aye.
You too.